Your patience is appreciated. We will begin in ten seconds. Welcome to our May 16, 2013 Gilbert Town Council meeting. We have called the meeting to order. A few minutes ago, we had our monthly Student Citizen of the Month recognition, and so we will continue. Next will be our invocation and then pledge of allegiance. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. We are pleased tonight to have Pastor Paul J. Thompson of the Heritage Free Will Baptist Church. He will lead us in the invocation, after which Councilmember Daniels will let us know who our scout is tonight, which is a member of one of our boards, and she will announce that person to lead us in the pledge. We invite those who are here in council chambers to please arise.
All right, let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we give you special thanks tonight for the privilege of calling on your name in prayer. We thank you, Lord, that you left us a manual to go by to tell us how you did it all and what you expect of us who live here in this world that you created from nothing. And in that manual, you said that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. I'm also convinced, Lord, that that goes for the town whose God is the Lord. So we thank you for the town of Gilbert. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for our council members. We thank you for all that they do. We thank you, Lord, for the obvious care that they have and how great this Welcome Home celebration was. And this Student of the Month, it just encourages people to go on and to serve. So we pray that you'd bless them tonight in this meeting. I pray, Lord, that you would also bless those who haven't returned home yet and are still in harm's way on potential battlefields across the world. I pray that you'd protect and bless them tonight. I pray that you'd guide and direct this council session to be what you would be pleased with and you could sanction. And we'll give you thanks for it all tonight, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Mayor Lewis, we have Paul Marchant, a member of our Parks and Recreation Board that will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Our town clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Ray? Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
The Quorn is present.
Thank you. For the presentations and proclamations, the next agenda item is the Pillar of the Month. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. As council members and town staff, we truly care about each customer that our organization relates to, both internally and externally. We are committed to building lasting relationships. We are sincerely concerned about those we serve by expressing gratitude and helping people in need.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook, you may proceed with the next proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I would love to invite our team members from the Public Works Department. Tonight, we're going to honor these fine folks and their team members. Come on over. Could you be so kind to maybe introduce yourself and what role you have with Public Works?
My name is Mark Horn, and I'm the Division Manager over Waste Water and Reclaim Water Operations.
I am Nicole Daly, and I am the Interim Director of Public Works.
Curtis Charlie, Streets Manager.
Well, thank you. But first of all, Mayor, we have an exciting video that we would like to show the folks here in the chamber as well as home. If I understand correctly, the Maintenance Supervisors Association, you have an annual competition, and this competition has been dominated by the town of Gilbert. Is that my understanding? In years, ten years. And first of all, let's show this video of how we dominate the ballot.
Arizona municipalities are taking it to the streets. It's what the Maintenance Superintendent Association Equipment Rodeo is all about.
A day for us to kind of showcase our events and what we do and compete against each other and have fun.
This is the second year Gilbert has hosted the event that brings surrounding cities together to face off and have fun.
Thanks for being here and have a good day and be safe.
Street department employees compete in their specialty, completing a task or operating heavy equipment.
We have a road grader, backhoe event, track seal event, a sweeper event, a sign placement event.
And they have to know their stuff forwards and backwards for the judges.
How well they operate the equipment without being hazardous or running to different cones or obstacles and their time.
Judges also test the quality of work, especially in events like the sign placement or asphalt patch. There's suspense and team spirit. Some might even think of it as a Public Works Olympics. The competition is tough but friendly.
For me, it's more than that is fun. It's very interesting to talk to other people from the sister cities around here.
Maria Flores is driving the street sweeper for Team Gilbert.
We're supposed to hit three targets and try to miss all the cones.
Most employees also see this rodeo as a learning opportunity, a chance to share street secrets and see how others get the job done.
At the end, we all operate a sweeper, but everybody does it different.
Heavy equipment operator Jason Kano competed laying concrete and driving a floor lift.
It's always good to watch the other cities, see how they approach their jobs and how they do it.
And for Mesa employee Chip Dowdery, it's about the camaraderie.
The events aren't really as important as us just getting together, I think.
The event also honors its namesake, Tom Sheets, a former town of Gilbert employee who passed away six years ago.
He was instrumental in putting this event on every year, and so this is just a tribute to him and a way for us to remember his name and everything that he did for the town of Gilbert and for the Maintenance Superintendent Association.
And in the end, the MSA and other sponsors acknowledge those jobs well done.
In first place, Rob Gilbert. Jason Kano?
You know, what they do, nobody sees. The street departments are pretty much behind the scenes, but they're the ones who are responsible for everything that the cities have, you know, their roads, their landscaping, their signals, their signs, their striping, everything that you see in a municipality in the right of way, we maintain.
For the crews who work so hard all year, it's their day to shine. This is Gilbert Digital.
We'd like to thank our Media Relations Department for putting that video together for us, and it's a great job. And I'd like to just say, once again, that was the Maintenance Superintendent Association. And basically what it is, is just an organization of street departments throughout the state that get together and trade, share trade secrets and have training and classes and try and just make ourselves better and help us all do our jobs better.
Well, we thank you because this organization obviously keeps our town, you know, clean and safe as it relates to all of the public works that they do. So again, can we extend a wonderful thank you for your team members for keeping Gilbert just a great place to live. Thank you. But I also have a proclamation, if we'd like to do that first. Would that be all, Mayor? So let's, let me read this proclamation. Whereas the public works service provided by the town of Gilbert are an integral part of the residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding community is vital to the efficient operation of public works programs such as street maintenance, traffic signals, street lights, landscape maintenance, storm drain, roads, walkway, signs, striping, sweeping and hazard response, solid waste and household hazard, waste recycling, collection and disposal, sanitary sewers, reclaimed water, wastewater treatment, water treatment, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these critical services and infrastructure, as well as their planning, design, construction, and maintenance are vital dependent on the efforts and skill of the public works employees, and whereas residents understand of the tasks performed by the Department of Public Works is important to the effectiveness of the quality and dedicated employees. On behalf of Mayor John Lewis of the town of Gilbert and all the residents of Gilbert, we hereby proclaim May 19 through May 25 of 2013 as Public Works Week. And again, thank you so very much for all you do.
So the gold medal winners, right here. Thank you. Would those involved in our presentation on the Gilbert Police Benevolent Fund, please come forward? We have a lot of great eating establishments in Gilbert, and one that we thank tonight, Nikotoni's, which, for those of you who were at the study session two days ago, we were at the Islands Community Center, and right across the street at the northeast corner of McReena Warner is this wonderful pizza place. A lot of good pizza in Gilbert, and this is just one of the best, and Vic has done a great job, and I'll let you comment on that, in doing events that would help our Police Benevolent Fund. And so Vic, thank you, and I'll let you have the mic and make the presentation.
No, I was gonna say anything. Mayor, Council, on behalf of myself and Nik and Tony's Pizza, we would like to give something to Police Benevolent Fund. In conjunction with our 10-year anniversary, we had tried to raise some money to help those who help us, and this is a token of our appreciation for all you guys do.
Thank you very much. We have a check in the amount of $548. For those of you who don't know what our benevolent fund does, is it assists the families of police officers and police employees when we have an officer or an employee who may be injured in the line of duty, may be injured off-duty, but has lost some income because of it, or may become ill. And it's a great thing for us, and this is another example of the partnership that we have with the community and coming together with the police department, and I thank you very much for doing this for us.
And where we love our small businesses, Vic, I understand that the way we remember the name of the restaurant is Son Nick and Son Tony. Oh, Daughter Tony, okay, thank you. Son Nick, Daughter Tony, together, great pizza. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and take the picture. Before we get to communication from citizens, occasionally you see Mayor Lewis do this where we have current events and it's at the end of the agenda, and I'm just going to do a couple of things very quickly. And in the Student Citizen of the Month, we did put some slides up to just quickly show some things that are happening in Gilbert, and see if that comes up. And then Dan, you're on deck right after this. I'm going to continue on as it's on this screen, and I'll describe it this Saturday. The Banner Health Center is opening up. It's adjacent to Town Hall on Warner Road, and there's an open house for the public from 9:00 to noon. You're invited to. Also, there are two fire stations that will be open this Saturday as part of National Emergency Medical Services Week. Fire Station One, which is on Williamsfield Road at 2730 East Williamsfield Road, and Fire Station Three at 1011 East Guadalupe Road, will be open from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. for citizens to come and take tours and get a chance to meet our firefighters. The third item I mentioned on this screen is the Gilbert Feeding Families Community Food Drive. At facilities around town, all town facilities, the fire stations, and several of our businesses have a box that is part of Gilbert Feeding Families. A year ago, in this food drive, we collected 40,000 meals worth of food. This year, we're targeting to do 50,000, so we invite all of you to participate. It can be any type of canned food, bottled water, just things that are packaged. And at the town level, to encourage participation, there are different events going on. This past week, it was the canned tuna drive, and just for the week, and the department that ended up getting the most cans of tuna was the finance department, and you can see that they also, as part of the competition, had to stack them artistically. And so this is the finance department with their 274 cans of tuna, and we congratulate them. Two events we invite the community to come to. Operation Welcome Home. Another wonderful event will be Wednesday of next week, 6:00 p.m. We will be honoring Army Sergeant First Class Cory Remsberg. And then on Memorial Day, and I understand we'll have one communication from citizen announcement, so I'll just keep it brief, but 9:00 a.m., you're invited to come down to the Gilbert Historical Museum, and after the 30-minute program until noon, the museum will be open, and we look forward to that. On that note, oh, and also, thank you, related to our education and the Student Citizen of the Month, there are so many to recognize and thank, and each school has many. We have had some of the national scholars of the entire country that are recognizing Gilbert, and we thank them. And I just happen to be at two events, and I'll be at a third one tomorrow at Gilbert Elementary School. They started the Leader in Me Program, and we recognize that. Also, last Monday night at Campbell Verde High School, they had the Biomedical Science Capstone Project Night, which was fascinating, 12 projects of caliber that just amazed me of our students right here in Gilbert. Tomorrow at 2:00 p.m., Gilbert Classical Academy will be honored and recognized for being named the third-best high school in the state of Arizona and the 28th-best high school in the entire country, and we congratulate them. Thank you. Dan Henderson, Dan, I'm going to have you come here to the podium because our economic development team submitted an application, and Dan will tell us more about that, and we received some feedback. And then you, I think you have two additional announcements on that, so Dan, tell us what has happened to Gilbert as far as another significant recognition.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to brief you on a couple of things related to economic development. Each year, we set transactional goals for our Economic Development Office. We set personal development goals, and we also set out for an organizational goal. This year, we set an organizational goal to become an accredited economic development organization through the International Economic Development Council. Earlier in the week, we were recognized by IEDC as the first Arizona community, the second municipality in the nation, and just 35th economic development organization accredited through this process, and we're delighted to share that with the community, share that with you, Mayor and Council, and certainly with the staff. This accreditation takes literally everybody to obtain. They come out and look at how we collaborate in the community. They look at our processes, they look at our procedures, they look at how we measure activity, and I am delighted and somewhat humbled by this process, but delighted to share with you this accreditation for the community, the mayor and council, and certainly for the Economic Development Organization. I would be remiss if I did not bring the Economic Development Team up here, so I'd like to call the Economic Development Team up here real quick and just give them a hearty thank you, and don't be shy. This is not a group that's typically...
Dan, while they are coming up, I will mention to you that there were two, and a very significant package was submitted. And then a few weeks ago, there were two individuals representing this organization that came to Gilbert, and they were here for three days. They not only got inside of all of the town files, but they talked to regional leaders, local community and business leaders, and as they left, they said to me, Mayor Lewis, you should consider yourself very lucky, because this is the type of community that has completely come together to work as a team on behalf of making a better business community and open to business and a great place for economic development. Now, you know, it's one thing to have the team there, Dan, have them up here in front. We're gonna have to take a picture of this group in just a minute. There we go.
Scott Powell.
Amanda Elliott.
Kelly Patton, I'm responsible for Business Attraction.
And I'm John Zuplan.
So in an effort to keep the good news coming, a lot of this team gets involved in a lot of regional economic development organizations, state economic development organizations, and Scott Powell, I'd like you to stand up. Scott was just recently recognized through the Arizona Association of Economic Development, received a Presidential Medal from the President and the chairperson of the Arizona Association for Economic Development for his work, outstanding work, I should say, in dedication to the Governmental Affairs Committee, and as of May, Scott will take over as the committee chair. So Scott, congratulations, job well done. Well, this picture here is a picture of Barry Broome. He's the president and CEO of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Barry was also a recipient of an award from the Arizona Association for Economic Development. He was recognized as the Developer of the Year. For those of you that know Barry, he's a tireless leader of economic development, a great leader, a very smart individual, and we're delighted to have him leading our regional economic development efforts. So Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to let you know, given our contractual relationship with this regional organization for some 20-plus years, we're delighted to share with you that the leader of this organization has received that wonderful award and wonderful recognition as the Economic Developer of the Year.
Thank you, Dan, and to the team, congratulations. On the agenda, we move to communication from citizens. As noted, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Cooper, what requests do we have?
Mayor, we have two requests to speak under this item. We have Paula Dubus and Les Prusmic. We'll take them in that order.
And Paula, as you come forward, please. At the microphone are some colored lights, and you will be given three minutes to speak right here at that microphone right up here. Yes, thank you. And yes, right there, and for the record, Paula, you're asked to state your name, and if you're a resident of Gilbert, and then you'll be given three minutes to speak, please.
My name is Paula Dubus, and I'm a Gilbert resident. Dear Mayor Lewis, Town Council, and the community at large, thank you for the opportunity to share my opinion with you. Tax policy encourages or discourages investment in our community. Our community benefits when town government is a clear communicator to Gilbert residents and business leaders about what is hoped for the town of Gilbert and what would be asked of them. The ability to both craft creative relationships with the business community and identify strengths in those relationships may have long-lasting impact on our town's prosperity. The town of Gilbert could collect the same tax revenue in 100 different ways. It is tax policy and tax strategy that shapes this community by influencing business leaders to unleash or diminish Gilbert's economic potential. Personally, I'm disappointed in the level of discussion on recent tax-related issues. In my opinion, the ill-framed debate has been damaging to our community reputation, inconsistent in tax policy, and sending a confused message to Gilbert residents and business leaders during our important expansion period, none of which is in the long-term interest of our town of Gilbert. I propose the town council award a research contract to a local university to do tax policy research to support a 10-year framework for taxation in the town of Gilbert, similar to the 10-year master plan for Parks and Recreation. Similar to the arrangement on the 10-year master plan for Parks and Recreation, the research team could examine best practices in peer communities, survey our own residents on their opinion of current and projected tax burdens, provide background research on taxation strategies, and present findings to the town council. Ultimately, I hope this would elevate the discussion on taxation to a more informed, cooperative, and creative environment, hopefully resulting in better tax policy for the town of Gilbert and truly serving the long-term interests of Gilbert residents and the business community. Thank you for your efforts on behalf of the town of Gilbert.
Thank you. Okay, I'm supposed to be on here someplace. It should be Memorial Day. Oh, duh, it's right at the top. Mayor Lewis, Town Council, Town of Gilbert, I'd just like to take a few minutes of your time and talk a little bit about the upcoming Memorial Day holiday. In this country, we have two holidays that honor our veterans, and as I put this together, I was reminded of the phrase that we use to describe those who serve this country in a military way. All gave some, some gave all. And I'd like to say that, or observe that, that...
And I'd like to say that, or observe that Veterans' Day honors those that fall under the first part, all gave some. But Memorial Day really strikes at the heart of military service. These are the folks that we honor because they gave all. Now, in the United States, the tradition of decorating soldiers' graves with flowers began during the Civil War. And the first well-known memorial-type observance took place in Charleston, South Carolina, on May 1st, 1865. This was the site of a POW camp where 257 Union prisoners died and were hastily buried in unmarked graves. Together with teachers and missionaries, blacks in Charleston organized the May Days Ceremony. These freedmen cleaned up and landscaped the burial ground, building an enclosure and an arch labeled Martyrs of the Racecourse. Nearly 10,000 people, mostly freedmen, and including 3,000 schoolchildren, gathered to commemorate the Union dead. On May 5th, 1868, General John A. Logan, Commander-in-Chief of the Grand Army of the Republic, the Organization for Union Civil War Veterans, issued a proclamation that Decoration Day should be observed nationwide and annually. It was observed for the first time on May 30th of that same year. Now, there are two reasons given for that. One, that it was the date that no battle during the Civil War took place, or it was because that was the optimal date for flowers in bloom. Either way, sounds like two good reasons. So, events were held in 183 cemeteries in 27 states in this first year, and that almost doubled to 336 in 1869. The northern states quickly adopted the holiday, and by 1890, every northern state had established Memorial Day as a state holiday. Now, the name for the holiday gradually changed from Decoration Day to Memorial Day, which was first used in 1882. It did not become more common until after World War II, and was not declared the official name by federal law until 1967. On June 28th, 1968, Congress passed the Uniform Monday Holiday Act, and Memorial Day was one of the four holidays that became a three-day weekend. So, that's when it moved from May 30th to the last Monday in May. But we shouldn't consider it just another three-day weekend. We shouldn't consider it the kickoff for the summer. Now, the traditional observance on Memorial Day involves the flag of the United States being raised briskly to the top of the staff and then solemnly lowered to half-staff position, where it remains only until noon. It is then raised to full staff for the remainder of the day. The half-staff position remembers the more than 1 million men and women who gave their lives in service of their country. And at noon, their memory is raised by the living who resolved not to let their sacrifice be in vain, but to rise up in their stead and continue the fight for liberty and justice for all. The other thing that we do is that at 3:00, wherever you are, to stop and take a moment of silence and remember those who have died fighting for our freedoms. And so, Mayor's already mentioned it, I would like to remind everybody that on Monday, May 27th, the Town of Gilbert's Memorial Day ceremonies, co-sponsored by the Historical Museum and the American Legion Post Number 39, take place at the Gilbert Historical Museum, beginning at 9:00 a.m. They last about an hour. Unless you get there early, bring your own chairs. And then, following the ceremony, there is free admission to the museum until noon. And besides all the other normal, wonderful displays, the annual quilting show, there is a new military experience exhibit to experience. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you on Memorial Day this year.
Thank you. And to our town clerk for the record, Les did introduce himself as he started off Operation Malcolm Holmes. Les, thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, I believe those were the only two requests for communication from citizens.
Correct.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar. Items listed on the consent calendar may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Cooper, what requests we have from the council on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar, items 6 to 20, pulling items 17 and 18, and noting that item 9 has been removed. Language on 16 has been updated, and at the minutes from two meetings has been modified from the original packet and are on the dais.
Thank you. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a six-o vote. Thank you. Agenda item 17. Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, I doubt there's going to be desire to discuss this at length, but just want to explain briefly on this. Number 17 is Highway Safety Improvement Grant Funding for the purchase of upgrades to our pedestrian countdown, or improving them to countdown signals. I think this is a pretty worthy project. But I think, so much so related to public safety, it's probably something we should be funding here locally with our Streets Fund. I think that's a better mechanism. I think there's more accountability, and the people who use it pay for it. So, I think there's reasons for that. But I want to point something out. This is a different kind of item, in my opinion. There's a mandate attached to this. The mandate can be reached, simply reached, by upgrading these timers. And so, I respect those who voted a different way on this one. It's certainly a lot closer to a gray area for me, but just wanted to explain my vote, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve item 17.
Second.
Second. With that motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a 5-1 vote. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, number 18.
Mayor, this is some more federal grants. This is the CMAC funding. This is virtually identical to the one that voted against previously, just in a different location. So, I won't go through that argument again, but just wanted to be able to pull it so I could vote separately on it.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Or Councilmember Taylor, do you? Would you wish to speak?
Yes, if I can. Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I'm a systems thinker, and I kind of look to where this money comes through. I did find it interesting, one of the reasons I do support the prior grant was a lot of that's funded through the gas tax, so it is money that we're putting in. It's not redistributive in nature. And so, similar mechanism is funding this particular grant. I did find a report that was dated January 12th that, I'll just read one little paragraph of this report. "The Congressional Budgets Office protects that the fund's highway account will become insolvent this year." So, I don't have enough data to totally know if this account is at zero. So, happy to vote for this, you know, give the benefit of the doubt to the government that they still have some money. But I think it's important that we just look at some of these accounts, and when they are at zero or bankrupt, let's really scrutinize to see if this is the right source of money, because it needs to be there if we want to draw it down. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Move to approve item 18.
Second.
There's a motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a 5-1 vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, I believe we've concluded the consent calendar. To our town attorney tonight, in the public hearing, we have agenda items 21, 22, 23, which are going to be continued. Just to remind myself, I do not need to open a public hearing on those items. We can just proceed by continuing them with a vote. Is that correct?
That is to your discretion. You can do either or.
All right. So, just to continue, so I will entertain a motion to have those three agenda items continued.
Mayor, I move that we continue items 21, 22, and 23 to the council meeting on June 6th, 2013.
Second.
Okay. With that motion, second, please vote. Thank you. Let's approve with a six-o vote. To the council, I've noticed with Vice Mayor Cooper that we have various individuals, several individuals that wish to speak on agenda item 30. Is that correct? Do we have any others who have submitted cards? Okay. And normally, I would just continue systematically in the sequential order, and I'll just turn to the council. We do have several people here that are part of agenda item 30, that's the bed tax. Would we like to do 30 and then get back to the sequential order? Okay. So, agenda item 30 is an administrative item, and I will just note, as it says on the agenda, that administrative items are for council discussion and action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the council regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on an administrative item should complete a request to speak form and indicate the item they wish to address. Council may or may not accept public comment. I believe that we will accept public comment. And on 30, which is our bed tax discussion, Councilmember Peterson, to make sure that, as you brought it forward, to have a quick update from town staff, and then, would you like to have a few minutes to speak, or go ahead and do the public comments, and then have some comments from you? Okay. Scott, we'll do the overview, please.
Thank you, Your Honor and council members. As you mentioned, this is consideration of our transient lodging tax, also known as the bed tax. And what I'd like to do is just give you a very brief overview and not take a lot of time in presenting it, since we have talked about it in other forums. And let me just talk a little bit, first of all, about the statistics on what we've collected over the last couple of years. Fiscal year 2012, we collected close to $300,000 in our bed tax, which, if you recall, our bed tax was established at 3% years ago in anticipation of the hotels that we would be gaining in the town. In fiscal year 2013, this year to date through March, we have collected $224,000. We anticipate at the rate that we have been collecting that by the year end, we'll be at about, somewhere between $320,000, $330,000 in what we will collect in the bed tax. The use of the funds in comparison, and one thing that I really want to point out in this particular slide is that in fiscal year 2012 and years prior to that, we actually were engaged in what we call product promotion, tourism product promotion, which is a little bit different than actually the marketing, which you see in fiscal year 2013. This year, we're into more of the marketing as well as promotion. Product promotion includes promotion of tourism-related activities in the town or facilities. And in this case, in 2012, we had support to the Historical Museum, we had a chamber contract that was helping us with our tourism marketing efforts. We had contribution to the arts and also to Big League Dreams. And this was more oriented towards promoting product, tourism product, not as much towards marketing. This fiscal year, the bed tax money that we had budgeted for 2013 is actually oriented towards marketing as well as some promotion. But you can see, we've actually purchased the Smith Travel Reports, which helps us with our marketing efforts, and will help the hotel industry also. We are publishing brochures. We're working on one main brochure, which is the Experience Gilbert brochure, which is part of our strategy to begin putting together a packet of information that can be made available to potential visitors. We've also purchased ad space and are looking at additional ad space. We've also set aside money for continued product promotion. Now, we've discussed in the past about Proposition 302, and in comparison to the bed tax dollars that we collect in the town, we've, in the last couple of years, have been able to partner with the City of Mesa, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, in receiving Proposition 302 funds. And the Proposition 302 funds have helped us to continue to develop our marketing infrastructure for tourism. You can see, this past year, we've spent money on the website development, which is up and running now. We have placed ads in the Allegiant Airlines Sunseeker magazine, which is an important outlet for us. Out at the Gateway Airport, we now have on the Gateway Information Board a banner that contains information about the town of Gilbert. We have ad space in Visit Gateway. We purchased also ad information on the TripAdvisor website, and we have had sponsored familiarization tours, which include having travel industry professionals and some other critical types of people throughout the country that have come to the area and stay in our local hotels, eat at our restaurants, and go back to their own communities, and write about those, as well as promote our area. Proposition 302 funds are totally separate, by the way. I think you already understand, in the bed tax funds that we collect. There was a question about the Valley, several of the Valley cities and their rates and the comparisons to our rate at 3% in doing a survey of various different communities. We found that Chandler was now at a rate of 4.4% for stays of less than 30 days, 1.5% for stays over 30 days. Virtually all others around us are at 5%. And some of those have increased from 3 to 5 with a particular set aside, the City of Mesa, for the construction of the new Cub Stadium. An interesting note that I included down here at the bottom was that there was a 6.5% temporary bed tax that has been in place for a couple of years, and that will reduce to 5.5% on May 31st. And this is not in any way related to the Proposition 302 funds. Proposition 302 was passed just in Maricopa County and is particular to the county and the hotels in the county. This is a statewide tax that is being reduced. So, there is a slight reduction that will be happening. Your Honor, I believe that that is kind of an overview that I wanted to give. You also have the council communication. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have, rather than take up a lot more time, something we've been talking about.
Thank you. Why don't we proceed with those who have requested to speak and stay nearby. We may have some additional questions for you. Well, let me, to the council right now, do you have any questions you would like to ask at this point? Councilmember Cooper.
Scott, I know we had this quick discussion. I'm not sure if you were able to find why this was published this way, but in the 2013 Arizona Local Government Directory, you know, we had talked about what was published in Chandler was at 2.9%. And obviously, what you showed was that it was different. Do you have any explanation as to, you know, why it's published that? Did Chandler do something after this was published?
Well, the current rate, 4.4%, I'm not sure when that was published, but I think the current rate was in fiscal year 10 or 11 that they changed to this current rate. The 2.9%, I've seen that in other documents too, and I don't know if that was an aggregate, an average of what they collect over time, but I called back and verified with their tax people that this is the correct information.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember-- All right. Thank you, Scott. Councilmember Peterson, please.
A quick note, just, I think it's relevant. Goodyear has a rate of 2.5%, but can you go back to the page on the expenditures real quick, please? Okay. I just want to make something clear here. I think I understand it, but I want to make sure everyone else does too, and make sure I do. The FY 2012 product promotion expenditures, except for the chamber contract and the arts line, the rest of it's all still taking place as well in 2013. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
So, as a total expenditure for that year, we would mostly add them together, subtracting a couple lines. Would that be correct?
Say that again, Your Honor.
So, if we wanted to get the total expenditure toward both product promotion and marketing-- So if we wanted to get the total expenditure toward both product promotion and marketing for fiscal year 2013, we would need to add pretty much the fiscal year 2012 total to the other, minus the chamber and arts lines.
Well, there are expenditures that are in the general fund. I don't know if we'd actually put that in as marketing and promotion, but there are expenditures in the general fund that are related to the two items you're talking about. Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooper. Please proceed with those who wish to speak.
We have John Chiaza, who can, will go first, and then she'll be, or he'll be followed by Paula Dubus.
And John, as you know, if you could state your name, and if you're a Gilbert resident for the record, and you will be given three minutes.
My name is John Chiaza, and I'm a 24-year resident of Gilbert. I'm mayor and city council. With this bed tax now before us, I want to speak in high favor of it. This tax is all about promoting our tourism here in Gilbert. Tourism, as you all know, is a big part of many of our surrounding cities. Most cities dedicate a significant portion of the tax to tourism, of marketing, and helping fill regional part of successful opportunities to capture out-of-state money. Hotels across the Valley overwhelmingly support the bed tax, and it was the hospitality industry that asked Glendale in 2011 to raise its bed tax rate to make the city more competitive with other communities that have visitor attraction. The potential revenue received from tourists in our community will be quite significant as our town grows and more events are planned here. The options of possibly denying a bed tax here and having the hotels charge it does nothing towards promoting tourism in our own community. It will also help increase profits for both large and small businesses of our community. I want to quote right here Mayor Lewis, the last time this issue was brought up for discussion here in the town, in the council chambers. Mayor Lewis spoke, "Do you want to put a big wall around Gilbert and say, 'Don't come in and tell people, don't tell people about Gilbert? I'd guess I'd be pretty frustrated if we don't pass this.' I have to say, not only will Mayor, the mayor be frustrated at not passing this, the whole community will be frustrated also. That wall around our town is beginning to show, and the political agendas that have some of our elected officials, of some of our elected officials are wanting to take, will keep building that wall. We have such promising economic future in our community and once a great reputation here in Gilbert to be quite proud of. All of that could be in jeopardy. Some of our elected officials must be, must understand, they were elected to do a job serving all the people in our community, to promote its economic growth and for the betterment of all of Gilbert. Political agendas and beliefs must not be inserted in to prevent that from happening. The people of Gilbert are relying on all of you to do what is right for the community. Please bring that good reputation back." Thank you.
Thank you. Paula? And then after Paula, Jamie Belcher.
Hello. My name is Paula Dubus, and I'm a Gilbert resident. Dear Mayor Lewis, Town Council, and the community at large, thank you for the opportunity to share my opinion with you. This evening, my hope is that you decide not to vote on proposed changes to the bed While I question the merits of relying on Prop 302 funding, which has a scheduled end date, prefer to stay with the bed tax, which is controlled by the town of Gilbert, and disagree with reducing tourism marketing, which benefits all Gilbert businesses, but most especially the small business community. My ultimate objection to voting on this measure this evening is that the town would be taking unnecessary risks with our tax strategy without proper consideration of how this will change our relationship to the business community and how that would impact our economic picture. I have not seen any clear communication from our town council on our overall tax strategy and tax policy. Rather, there has been a hodgepodge of votes that are inconsistent and scattered. I feel as if in our town, if we can have careful decisions about swing sets and skate parks, it is fair as residents to demand at least as much careful and strategic decision-making for our tax policy. To my knowledge, there are no deadlines or calls to action that require a vote tonight. It is within your control to take time to do things in a calm, informed, learned manner. Any move on this proposal in haste is not in the long-term interests of the town of Gilbert. Please do the right thing and close discussion on this matter until after the town council retreat, when you will have had an opportunity as a collective body to discuss tax strategy and tax policy concerns. Please do the right thing and do not rush to vote on this isolated measure. Please work on a cohesive and comprehensive approach to taxation, which takes into account our mission, vision, aspirations, and responsibilities, along with our overall tax burden. Thank you for your efforts on behalf of the town of Gilbert.
Thank you. Jamie.
Hello, Town Council and Mayor, Town of Gilbert. My name is Jamie Belcher, and I'm a small business here in the town of Gilbert. I urge the town of Gilbert to please move forward with this bed tax. It's viable to our business. I also ask the town council, please to move forward with a case study before you make this drastic change, to help you have an educated guess what the bed tax does to the town of Gilbert. It's viable, it's going to be more viable to our business and the community here. As our town grows with tourism, we're going to need these dollars to make sure we're marketing Gilbert in the correct way. With our resources like Big League Dreams and Phoenix Mesa Gateway, I ask that these tax dollars help draw people into the town of Gilbert. As a small business in here, in this town, it's very, very, very important to us. And as we look to grow the tourism industry and other hotels and bring other quality hotels into the town of Gilbert, it's going to be very hard to do that without no tourism tax. So I please ask you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, any other requests?
I don't have any other cards.
Okay. Thank you. Scott and Torque Town Manager, it would be helpful, I think, for our citizens to understand that we have a bed tax of 3%. We are making plans in our budget, which we will talk about in a few minutes, for using the 3% more strategically to focus on helping individuals outside of Gilbert know about our community. Specifically, we have nine organizations that are currently collecting bed tax. And Town Manager Banger, if you could just give a high-level summary of plans for the future, such as there is a half a position that is in the budget that would be focused on tourism, that would be focused on some of the items that Scott presented, and anything else. And this is not advocating, this is more just information as to what the plans are for next year. And then we'll see if there are additional questions for Scott. And then I think Councilmember Peterson would want to make sure you have a moment, because the motion that has been placed in the packet and in front of the council is to change the bed tax from 3 to 2.5%. I'll let you explain that in just a minute. But Town Manager Banger, as far as information, what are the plans based on if the 3% stays intact?
Mayor, members of the council, what we have proposed before you in the fiscal year 14, 13, 14 budget is a position, we would transfer the tourism function over into the Economic Development Department. We placed it into Parks and Recreation for this year when we took it over because of Melanie Dyke, our interim director of Parks and Rec,'s background in helping us go through the competitive process for our tourism-related activities. It seemed that was the best fit at that time. To become more strategic and more focused on it, we are proposing in the next budget a position that would have shared duties, a responsibility and focus for the continued development of the Heritage District and the downtown, and help it achieve its highest and best use and full build-out, as well as focus on our tourism activities specifically and be more strategic. We do not bring in, we have nine hotels. We will have additional hotels come to Gilbert as we reach build-out. We do not bring in a lot of money right now, so we're trying to stretch those dollars as far as we can and spend them on things such as a website and have a strong web presence that highlights all of the businesses and the tourism-based activities we have in town to raise awareness on that, to leverage our dollars with joint marketing campaigns with other communities around the region. In the following year, I might ask Scott or even Dan Henderson if they'd like to come up and share any more, but it will be more of the same, just more strategically focused than individual.
Thank you. I'll see how the council, if there's some questions, we may bring them up. And one of the comments that I made is that we did not have a bed tax until a few years ago. We did not have a hotel. And now with the growth of Gilbert, we have nine. And it wasn't that I was trying to put down Gilbert, but with the census of two years ago, being listed as the 99th-largest community in the country, and there are 30,000 incorporated cities and towns, in many ways, that put us in the big leagues, and we have admitted that we're new at this, and so we're kind of rookies, but we're doing our best, and I think we've made great progress. And the focus over the last year has been more to strategically find ways to let individuals outside of Gilbert know about Gilbert. Scott, Jamie represented one of the nine organizations that are collecting a bed tax. A question I had asked you, and I haven't had a chance to follow up, of the nine, do you know how many are in support of keeping the current 3% bed tax? Are there all nine, or half and half, or what feedback have you received?
The stakeholder meeting that we have periodically, I've, I haven't had all nine there, but the ones that have been there, which represent what I call the Big Six, they're all in favor and strongly in favor of it, because they have no other way to promote the town. The money that they use for promoting or doing marketing is for their business. They promote the business and rely on the bed tax to promote the town, to bring them the business.
Thank you. Other questions for Scott? Councilmember Peterson, or please?
I make one clarifying comment for Councilmember Cook. We just verified on that 2.9% that we were talking about with Chandler. Chandler actually is 2.9% on the bed tax, which is charged in addition to the 1.5% sales tax for stays under 30 days. For stays over 30 days, they only charge the 1.5% transaction privilege tax.
Can you pull up that chart again that showed the four? So explain that to me one more time, as you just described.
2.9% were correct. That is the...
So the 4.4 is not correct?
4.4 is the total amount that they charge for any stays less than 30 days, which means they're charging 1.5% sales tax in addition to 2.9% bed tax.
So like for us, we charge 1.5 plus 3. Is that what I'm hearing you saying, that it would be similar calculation?
Yes. And apples to apples, Gilbert would be 4.5 based on that.
That's what I'm...
I believe the rest, though, from Mesa to Glendale, that's the actual bed tax that I've seen.
Bed tax, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I know, Councilmember Cook, as we had a conversation, that would, where the motion that we'll be talking about is a 2.5, you had commented maybe another alternate could be, and I'll, please?
Well, maybe we should let Councilmember Peterson begin, and we'll see how the dialogue goes.
Okay.
And then maybe I will...
Consider that. Councilmember Peterson, and thank you. Two weeks ago, you brought this up. You had some definite thoughts and ideas. Please.
Mayor, I first want to start with a staff question, and I know we can't get into direction on staff on this, we're probably not on the agenda, but I'm curious, and maybe it's just to refresh my memory, but we came, the tourism contract came to the council from the chamber. I remember that we voted against it. We had varying reasons, I suppose. Some, I don't know what, others were, mine was based on the principle behind it. And so what I'm seeing is the expenditures that we're doing in-house now are as much or exceeds the amounts that we were going to be paying to the chamber. I'm just wondering how that decision was made, what direction was given to do that?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, that decision was made by the council on the evening in which we determined that we were going to do it in-house and to take 1% of the tourism tax collected by the town and apply that to our in-house tourism efforts, and that equated to that number.
Did we take a vote on that?
Boy, I would have to go back and check the minutes, Councilmember Peterson, but that's the way it was brought forward in the budget.
It's funny, because my recollection of that conversation was more like, "We're going to look at something here internally, and we'll get back to you." My thought staff was going to update us, and I expected that we would have some kind of an official vote or direction on that. I didn't feel that that happened, but we'll talk more about that later. I did want to just clarify a couple things. I did do some bed tax history research. It's fascinating. Guess where the birthplace of the bed tax? Well, based on my research, New York City. They're good at paving the way in a lot of those taxes, I think. When they first proposed it, the tourism industry was completely opposed. They hated it. But something special happened. The government promised to give back a certain portion of what they taxed. And since the hotels tax, show their rates before tax, they can advertise a rate that doesn't show it. And then a portion of that money that they don't advertise gets to come back, and they typically control, for the most part, how it gets spent. So it's interesting to look at that history. The other thing I wanted to just point out, because there is an expiration date on Prop 302. You're right. It's 2028, so that's a little ways out, but I did look into that as well. Now, I just want to make it clear, my opposition to the bed tax is based on principle, both political and economic. The political principle is no taxation without representation. Now, before everyone jumps all over me for that, let me just acknowledge that any consumption or sales tax has some instances of people paying the tax who can't hold those who tax them accountable. However, by a large majority, our local sales tax is paid by Gilbert residents who can hold those who tax them accountable. And I believe recent political history in Gilbert demonstrates adequate accountability for this tax. A bed tax is really just the opposite. By a large majority, it is paid by those who don't live in Gilbert and therefore can't hold those who tax them accountable. I have never heard of an instance of a grassroots uprising against a bed tax, and I would be surprised if anyone could find one. It looks like we might have a grassroots uprising from the Democratic Party, local Democratic Party here to keep the bed tax, but I'm still not seeing one against it. The economic principle is that the best way to encourage economic prosperity is to protect property rights, specifically in the form of letting individuals keep as much of the product of their own labor as possible. Obviously, some taxation is necessary to furnish the means to enforce the laws that protect those property rights. Yes, there is such a thing as too little government, as evidenced by the poor standard of living we see in societies where governments fail to protect the property rights of their citizens. But to tax an industry, just to turn around to subsidize it, to me, seems like a losing strategy. I believe industry will thrive better if we just cut the tax and the subsidy that the tax supports. Now, I wanted to briefly clarify some of my comments about the Chamber of Commerce, because it ties right into this idea of promoting all of Gilbert. When they described their efforts to promote Gilbert as a donation that they could no longer sustain, to me, that triggered some questions. Why is it that their hotel members weren't paying for that additional promotion? I can't imagine a better organization to promote those Gilbert hotels, especially since they're almost all members of the chamber. And if they didn't want to invest in that effort, it makes me wonder if there's a profit or a return on investment to be made in this kind of a collectivist promotion. It seems hard to imagine... It seems hard to imagine that any business would pass up the chance to make a profit. Just in case someone reminds me that they aren't allowed to participate in collectivist promotion, I'll say that still doesn't explain the reasons for that policy. And we're back to asking why they don't do it. Anyway, tonight, I bring a proposal to put the two ideas together, the two ideas, one being promote Gilbert through marketing and reducing taxes. So before we approve the recent acceptance of the Prop. 302 grant, there was $47,000 we just recently approved for that. We had around $300,000. I guess this year, if you factored that in, we're about 330. At any rate, that is available to promote Gilbert, and virtually, none of these dollars in previous years were actually used in marketing of Gilbert. My proposal is to keep the total amount of revenue available for promoting Gilbert basically the same by reducing the bed tax from 3% to 2.5. The amount available for promotion will stay about the same, but the amount that must go to marketing increases to, at minimum, the $47,000, because I think that grant requires we do it that way. Also, with this rate, I think we will tie Goodyear, and maybe actually, now that we've seen Chandler, we might actually pass up Chandler for the lowest bed tax in the valley.
Do you want to put that proposal in a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adjust the bed tax rate from 3% to 2.5.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Can we, I wanted to have some additional discussion, if that's okay? If not, I'm happy to vote now.
Will it change your decision? Because I think the six of us, this is our fifth significant time to talk about it, we're probably ready.
I'm happy to vote if that's--
Okay. Let's vote.
Mayor, can I motion for, amend the motion?
I don't know. Did we?
Already voted, yes.
Oh, you haven't voted, okay. Continue.
Clear it. You have to clear it.
One of the things that, as I was thinking through this, is that the $330,000 really only makes up, if we look at the estimate revenue that we'll get at the end of this fiscal year, is about $120 million. So the $330,000 comes out to about 0.3%, which is fairly small as relates to the overall budget, or the overall amount of money that we get from the bed tax. And we do have a healthy fund for this year, and it'll come out really well. So my position is very more of a competitive perspective, that I like to feel that our neighbors, you know, they obviously have a competitive, you know, position. And that's why I asked about the Chandler. And I know that this council won't get rid of the bed tax, but what I would like to propose is that, from a marketing perspective, that instead of going from 3 to 2.5, I like to make a proposal that we actually beat Chandler. And I like to propose that we go from 3.0 to 2.8. And we can take advantage of the marketing as it relates to being competitive, and at least here in the East Valley, I think it would provide us the ability to say that we do have, actually have the lowest, you know, bed tax here in the East Valley. And it's going to be very small, from, you know, 0.2%. But I believe that, from that perspective, that would be a great way to take advantage of a marketing position, being competitive.
Thank you. Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, that is not approved. Do we return, we return to the original motion? And if that can be cleared, and we'll, on that original motion, please vote. That's also not approved. All right, thank you. We're done. We move to the public hearing. And I do thank you. We've had some good discussion on it. And it wasn't just your birthday present, which is tomorrow, that we brought that up again, but thank you.
Mayor, can I just, I want to thank everyone who's been involved in the dialogue. I know it's taken a lot of patience. We've gone around and around on it. I thank the, all the citizens who have replied. I'm sorry, I haven't replied to all of them quite yet, but I will. We have a very full agenda, but I just wanted to thank everyone. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. And we do, tan jobio medito, for the record. The public hearing, '24, '25, '26, '27, '28, so those, Vice Mayor Cooper, just want to make sure we don't have any requests to speak on any of those items.
No, Mayor.
Okay. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And on our agenda, just to state that, I'll skip over that paragraph, because that's if they wish to speak. I think I'll skip that second one, too. I open the public hearing now for Agenda Items '24, '25, '26, '27, and '28. And let's go to Agenda Item '24. This is the capital improvement plan. As a council, we've had some information that's been brought to us. Would we like some discussion? Do we want a presentation? Are we ready to proceed on '24? Okay. I close the public hearing on Agenda Item '24, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item '24.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with a 6-0 vote. Agenda Item '25, we have opened, it's the budget. We purposefully did not have discussion on the budget on Tuesday night at our study session so that for the public, for the citizens that would be participating tonight, that we could do a short presentation. So Dawn, if you could give us that overview of the fiscal '13, '14 budget, and then we will continue, please.
Absolutely. Well, good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Dawn Irvine with the Office of Management and Budget here at the Town of Gilbert, and appreciate the opportunity this evening to talk with you about our proposed budget for the fiscal year 2013 and '14. I'd like to first turn it over to the Town Manager, Patrick Baner, for an introduction on this evening's presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We put together a very short, high-level presentation tonight to go over our budgeting process and some of the methodology that was followed, and some of the statistics to help us gauge where Gilbert ranks year-over-year against our own statistics as well as regionally. So with that, I will have Dawn present some initial information, and then I'll be back.
Thank you. Well, the first slide you see may look a little familiar to you. This is some information that we've used at some recent public meetings, and particularly with our own Legislative District 12. What you see before you is really an overview of some of the focus items that we've had here over the last couple of years here at the town, and they're really important to keep in mind as we go into the budget process for this year. You'll see right at the very top, everything about what we'll be presenting to you today and over the course of the next few weeks is very proactive, intentional, and strategic. That is one of the common themes that you would have heard in all of the executive team discussions and in the discussions throughout the town with all of the staff members. Everything about this budget is deliberate, and it was very focused as well. So as we move forward in the process, you'll see, or in the presentation, you'll see that there are very specific key areas that we focused in on this year to bring back to the council. What this is all about, as council well knows, is that responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars. We are here as a town, as a government, to make sure that we're representing the interests of the taxpayers, that we're providing those essential public services, and that we're doing so at the, in the best, providing the best possible service at the lowest possible cost. So you'll see also a concerted emphasis on efficiency and effectiveness in town operations. As we continue to emphasize transparency, also becomes important clarity. So what we're working for and continue to work to improve is clarity in messaging, not just providing the information, but ensuring that the message is there, the meaning behind it, and bringing it back to the context in which it's being presented. It's very difficult sometimes when we're dealing with tens of thousands of details and numbers and data, but what we are focused on here as a town, both at the council level and at the staff level, is in ensuring that that message is there consistent with the data itself. And then ultimately, that comes down to accountability. We, as a staff, are committed to being accountable to our council. As a town, we're committed to being accountable to our public, and that's what our services are all about. The focus this year on the budget is in the strategic initiatives. As we look at our essential government services and how the town has grown over the last few years, our strategic initiatives that the council has provided to the town staff give us that direction. It helps us to understand, as the town grows, what is the direction that we're headed? And with that direction, and we came back to council at the beginning of the year, and we heard from council specifically where we were to focus within those strategic initiatives. Now, as we've talked over the last couple of years about the zero-based budget process a couple of years back, it's important for us to revisit that just for a moment, because that really set the foundation for where we are today. Our zero-based budget allowed us to turn that corner between, from being just a pure high-growth community to one where we're starting to see that mature, sustainable community, ensuring that we're emphasizing the sustainability elements as well as continuing to be able to provide for the needs of growth. And then one of the major changes that you've seen over the course of the last couple of years is how we budget for contingency. This all circles back to transparency, clarity, and accountability by taking that flexibility out of the individual department areas and putting it at a town-wide level that makes sure that we see, we see what is going on within the departments, but then also, as those needs arise, it gives us the opportunity to look at the priorities so that competing interests may be weighed, and those valuable taxpayer dollars are being utilized and applied according to those priorities. So how do we do so? Well, the answer, and one of the themes that you'll continue to hear, is strategically. We're very strategic in the way that we approach the budget, and in the way we approach our operations, and the way that we approach the future for the community. And it comes back again to those strategic initiatives. As we look at the long term, as we look at the direction that our council has provided, we need to establish very deliberately how we approach those goals and how we can continue to achieve them, but again, in a manner that reflects the most efficient and effective way of doing business. So we do that with an emphasis on our short-term plans and our long-term plans. Now, what you've seen in the past, when we talked about our long-term plans, we were really focused on a five-year plan, and that's very commendable within the industry, so to speak. But what we're doing here in Gilbert is taking that to that next step. We're going beyond the five-year plans. We're looking at 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 30 years, and into build-out to ensure that this community is positioned to be successful, not just five years from now, but as we build out and as we become, again, that mature, sustainable community. So every budget request that came before the executive team, before the individual department directors, before it ever got to the executive team, and then as the executive team presented it to the manager, and what is now being presented to you, the council, was done with those long-term goals in mind. How exactly do each of these requests position ourselves as a town to be successful in accomplishing those goals? And the way that we did that was by bringing everybody together, stakeholders throughout the town. At every level within the town, we're involved in this process. Line-level employees, bringing to their supervisors, bringing to the managers, bringing to the department directors, what the needs were within their areas, how they could be more efficient. And you'll see, as we go into some more details, that we weren't talking just about what do we need to add in the budget, but what can we do differently? How can we do our operations differently? If we want to perhaps add something in here, what are we doing differently, and how can we give something else up in return? And in the council communication, you'll see a line that was labeled "cost containment strategies." Now, we've had some conversations, and Councilmember Peterson has provided some great input in terms of how we could perhaps better clarify that, but I can give you some examples right off the bat. You heard earlier in the discussion about tourism that we are looking to request a position that will help not only with redevelopment, but with tourism as well. As you've seen in the past, we had the $85,000 allocated towards tourism. The request before council is for the full amount of that position, to allow us to hire that position. But what you don't see in that request is that we're also looking to reduce that tourism funding that would have been in the department budget before by $35,000 and apply that towards the cost of the position. So when you look at those cost containment strategies, those are the types of conversations that occurred to help make us successful in the request that you see moving forward. And then the one other item I wanted to highlight here is the emphasis there on consensus. Not only did each department present their needs to each other, they discussed them, and they discussed them in context, and how does this affect each other, and how can we do things differently? And when you bring everybody to the table like that, you begin to have a lot of conversations regarding how we do business in a town, and what are some things that we're doing, maybe individually, that we could bring together, and we could, we can partner as departments and accomplish them in a more efficient and more effective manner. So again, with that emphasis not only on strategic delivery of services, but on how we can become more efficient and contain our costs. So if you look at the Venn diagram before you on the presentation, you'll see there are a few different items going on here. On the right-hand side, you see more of a short term, what our budget process is this year, that collaboration and consensus that we were talking about at the executive team level. But on the left-hand side, you'll also see we're talking about those long-term plans and continuing to move forward with our long-term infrastructure, our long-range infrastructure plans, our long-term financial plans, and all of those coming back to how do we move forward on our strategic initiatives. Well, as council knows, these are the strategic initiatives that have been laid before us. And again, as we mentioned earlier, these are some very broad goals, and they could be interpreted in many different ways. And really, to come forward to council with, the staff would have the opportunity to come up with any number of different requests to be able to support these strategic initiatives. That's why it was so very important that we come to council early in the process to determine what the specific goals were for this upcoming fiscal year, what we wanted to accomplish within it, and how we could really focus our efforts and our resources to accomplishing those goals. Now, as we start to move into some more of the detail related to the budget, we wanted to look back historically. What you see here is a depiction of how the budgets have been allocated in some of the larger categories. These don't equate to the entire budget in any fiscal year, but we are looking at the most significant components of those budgets so that we could compare them. As you can see, in 2010, growth was still a very major component, and it remains a major component of our budget for the town. You can see where the CIP, though, is considerably higher there than it has been in subsequent years. And again, as we continue to grow, but we're also looking now towards that sustainable And actually, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, Mayor Lewis, we had some additional inputs that was provided to us from Councilmember Peterson, and I think this would be a good opportunity to switch over to this particular slide. So the slide you saw just a moment ago showed that transition between the different categories in terms of our budget appropriation, the types of services, and that growing community. What you see before you here is also a look at the general fund budget and the cost per citizen. And as council knows, cost containment and ensuring that we're providing the most, the best possible service at the lowest possible cost remains a very important factor as we're looking at this. As we've discussed over the last several meetings, our class and comp study came back in and did identify that we were deficient in certain areas of the town in terms of our pay, and it did have an impact on our overall costs. And we wanted to make sure that we highlight that as well. So what you see before you here are those costs, those incremental costs, as Councilmember As we continue on, I'd like to ask the Town Manager back up to the podium to discuss some of the ways in which this helps to position the town moving forward, in moving forward with these strategic initiatives.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I thought it'd be helpful to run through some charts real quick that give us a high-level overview of where the town stands historically with population, with FD count. overview of where the town stands historically with population, with FD count, with expenditures, and where we would stand with the fiscal year 14 budget as it's presented to you. This first chart shows our budget from fiscal years 2009 to 14. It excludes contingency and transfers, so that we get an apples-to-apples look across each year. On the left-hand side of the graph, that blue 2009 bar goes up to just over $650 million in fiscal year 2009, and fiscal year 2014 with the budget before you, which is just under $450 million, about 446, 45, or somewhere right in there. The population graph on the right-hand side of the screen charts our population in 2009, somewhere just under, right at 200,000. Fiscal year 2014, we project will be at 226,000. FTEs per 1,000, this is something that we've talked about a lot, again, going from fiscal year 2010 with population, is the blue bar showing it right over around 200 and probably 8,000 residents. The red line would be the FTE ratio, just a hair under 5.8. Moving up to 2014 at about 226,000 residents with an FTE ratio just slightly below 5.5. So we actually remain fairly level from 2012 to 2014. That includes the proposed positions that are before you in the fiscal year 13, 14 budget. The cost of service, the city of Tempe, Arizona, does this on an annual basis. This is the 2012. They are still working on the 2013. We're anxious for them to get that out. It demonstrates that Gilbert is the lowest. What they look at here are revenues, the cost for each resident. One thing I know and why I'm anxious for it to come out is every one of the cities that are above us, Chandler, Mesa, Scottsdale, Tempe, Peoria, Phoenix, and Glendale, have all had a tax and/or a rate increase since this was last done. Gilbert has not raised any taxes nor any rates since this study was last done, so I anticipate that we are going to be even more efficient in comparison to our peer communities. The focus on strategic planning last, I feel very strongly that the town is engaged in a number of initiatives to look at strategic planning, probably more strategic planning that has been done than any other point in the town's history. Just the last fiscal year, we did a long-range revenue forecast. We did the first half of the long-range infrastructure forecast. We also did a, are just wrapping up, the Parks Master Plan. And we're, in the following fiscal year, going to be doing the second half of the long-range infrastructure study, the transportation master plan, as well as a staffing study, which will really give us a blueprint, as opposed to using an FTE count to get a handle on whether or not we are maintaining an effective level of staffing versus the quality of services we want to deliver. We'll actually develop a staffing plan by department and division going out five years, which will project out the needs of our population as it grows, both in the residential and commercial sectors, and give us a blueprint of what our staffing needs should look like that we can then work against and benchmark against to try to find ways to become even more efficient against those plans. So we'll open it up now for any questions, or mayor, however you want to proceed from here, but we thought it might be helpful to just give some high-level overview to the budget process and some of the key indicators we use.
Thank you. So we are on assignment to approve a preliminary budget. And specifically, Dawn, it would be general fund. I realize we have, well, I guess it's all. It's the general fund, the five enterprise funds, capital improvement projects, all together. And is there a number that we have on one of these sheets that we can also present to the public that potentially could be our motion? That then I'll turn to the rest of the council to see if we want to change that number. What number is being proposed?
Mayor, the council communication before you has the motion, and if I could ask the mayor's indulgence, if you could read that to me. It's the number and the amount of 466.
Okay, thank you. So I'll answer my own question. The motion that could be entertained is to have a preliminary budget of $466 million, $461,447. Is that right? Okay. I'll make a comment, and I am interested in having some council feedback as to feelings, because each of us met individually with Dawn and had some discussions and opportunities to ask questions and to have items clarified. I was uncomfortable about two weeks ago when I was looking at some of the FTE counts, and we did have an opportunity to go through each individual. Where I was uncomfortable was, it seemed like a very steep jump from last year. What helped me, and maybe it's a chart one behind that showed the FTE count per 1,000, and I realize that that's just one measurement of many, but what was interesting to me is in the year 2008, that there were 1,239 FTEs, and with this year's proposed budget, we would end up with 1,237, so it would actually be two FTEs lower than the year 2008. When we would put that with our population, 2009, when we had 1,235 employees, that the number of FTEs per 1,000 would be 5.9. And in the proposed budget this year, to go to the 1,237, it would be 5.46. So it now passes what I would call my reasonable check. And each of the, both the general fund and then the five enterprise funds and the CIP, comparing that to the last five years, it also does look reasonable. And so at this point, I'm feeling much better than I did two weeks ago, and thank you for the education. Let me now turn to other council members to see if there are specifics, or if we have had dialogue and we're comfortable, I'll entertain a motion. Let me start with Councilmember Cook. Do you have any questions related to the budget you wanted to bring up?
I do, but I actually have show and tell.
Please.
Would that be all right?
Yes.
I like show and tell. Well, as some, do you want to look at it a little better?
Slide it this way, it's not on the camera. There you go, right there.
Okay, well, how about right here? Well, we want it by you, so you can keep talking.
Well, we should actually put it by Councilmember Ray's seat. One of the, since I've been on council, I looked at kind of my time and my journey here in four phases. And the first phase, and again, I look at it from a business perspective, and the first phase was to truly understand what it costs to run the business. What is that minimum cost? And we were very fortunate to go through the zero-based budgeting process, and I believe we got as close to that finding better than ever. So we kind of had a good feel of what it costs to run the business at the minimum dollars, as-is, and move forward. The second phase for me was what we just recently got done as it relates to the compensation study, the competitive analysis, and so forth, because in my profession, you know, we make software, you know, hardware and provide a service. The town of Gilbert provides service, and that service, we want it to be at the best quality, want to keep our best players, our best team members, our A players, and so forth. And we went through that process, because we know that, at the end of the day, the level of quality that's given to our community, our residents and our businesses, we want our team members to be excited about that, and we want to pay for that level of effort, which we did. Phase three, to me, represents here, this seat. And as I've been navigating through the town for almost two years, and just trying to discover a couple of things, this, right before the holidays, I got to spend some time with the Parks and Recs folks during their holiday lunch. And one of the things I like to do is I always go into the room and I say, "So who in the room is the most vocal and opinionated?" Because that's the person I want to have lunch with. So some team members got me to meet some of those individuals, and they challenged me to basically hang out with them. So I got to hang out with them, and I got to put on their shoes for just a little bit. And they showed me some of their tools that they use to do their job, because as we talked about, the quality that we like to have as it relates to our services, this is one example of a lawnmower seat that we've had in our inventory for about 25 years. And when I, and this is not the one I actually saw, this is just a couple of them, but I was thinking about our team member going to work every day, cutting our ball fields to that wonderful standard, sitting on this seat, and I just, it just, you know, emotionally, I just was like, even in my own company, we would not allow, you know, that level of quality of tools of this type to, you know, we just wouldn't happen. And I asked a lot of questions about, you know, what has happened in the past. And what I've learned is that throughout the town, there are a number of systems, I call "systems" as it relates to all the different processes that we have. There have been several years where a lot of these systems have been deferred, where we have a minimum standard that we should keep things, have not been paid for. So my phase three in chatting with the budget team and other folks was, in this budget cycle, please share with, you know, the management team, what are those things that need to be taken care of, from, you know, the standard that they're at to at least that minimum? And this is just an example of, again, things that I believe that this budget year is going to help get us closer to giving the right types of tools, the right types of processes to help us even provide a better quality to our citizens, as well as bringing a work environment with better morale to our team members by now taking these funds for this fiscal year to do that. And then, obviously, Dawn knows that my fourth phase is really to help us understand what it costs to run the business at build-out. And so we are moving down those four phases that I've been looking at, doing. So I just wanted to share, as a show and tell, that this year, the team has provided input to the management team. They're not afraid to share some of these things that have been deferred in the past, and I'm really grateful that, you know, that we will hopefully begin to address a number of these systems that have been deferred to a quality or standard that we expect.
Thank you. For the show and tell, Councilmember Cook, are you comfortable with the preliminary budget numbers that have been presented?
Well, do I get to continue talking? The only thing that I wanted to share was related to some of the FTEs. And one of the things I've chatted with Chief Vance here today was the four firefighters in the roving truck. And one of the thoughts that I have, I know we're looking at replacing, you know, our fire chief with a new leader sometime this summer. And one of the things I think about, you know, is what problem are we trying to solve by adding these four firefighters in this roving truck in the south? And I got a great explanation about that. But I was thinking that our neighboring city to the north has a slightly little different model that I would love to have a discussion about, because when I think about the type of emergency calls that we majority get in Gilbert, tend to be more medical-related. And the thought would be to maybe, instead of those four individuals going to a single truck, maybe that when we get the new fire chief, a discussion might be to take advantage of what Mesa does, which is basically have a truck with two medical individuals that could potentially, you know, fulfill meeting some of those emergency calls while maybe keeping those trucks in-station so that we're not at a station service. So that was one of the things that, again, I know we're not here to discuss that, but that was one of the flags that came upon me, Mayor, that obviously that was of interest to me. The other thing that I'll be doing with Dawn is-
And let me just interrupt to our, in the minutes, if we can make sure and flag that as a future topic to discuss. Continue, thank you.
The other thing too, and again, I don't want to go through this here, because I know that this particular item is more about setting the maximum. It's not here to nitpick anything, but I did tell Dawn that there was a couple of red flags that I saw when I think about the growth here in Gilbert as it relates to the number of citizens in the population, as well as the business growth. And I see some of these items that Dawn has given us well exceeding that number. I need to go back and visit with the team to really understand, you know, why some things were 50% higher than the previous year, why some of the items were 177%. So again, I know this is not a discussion to nitpick that, but I do have some of those things that I'm going to do over the next couple of weeks before our June 6 meeting.
Thank you. So for tonight, you're comfortable in proceeding?
Again, this just sets the maximum.
Okay, thank you.
We're not approving the number of FTEs. And again, correct me, is that right, Dawn? Because I remember last year, I was kind of confused by our process being kind of a rookie at this. So this year, we're really just setting the max. Doesn't mean we have to approve of the max, but we won't exceed the max based upon our June 6 vote. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, that's correct. The action the staff is looking for today is to set a maximum level of appropriation for the next year. After this point in time, council will be able to reduce that level, move within different allocations, but would not be able to increase that level after the adoption this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm continually amazed, since the beginning of my start on council and with the expertise that our staff has, that the budget process seems to be more refined. And I really appreciate the efforts that I know the entire team has gone through to make that happen, and with Dawn's leadership and the adoption of financial policies and protocols, the ability that we've had as policymakers to weigh in on what we believe is our strategic goals for the community as a whole. And I love when we stay at that policy level, because it allows us to make both long-term plans and short-term goals that will help get us there. And so I am mayor tonight in favor of setting that upper limit. We have had lots of discussions, Dawn and I have gone back and forth too, about some of the different line items. I think we will continue to refine some of those things, but gone are the days when we will be going through the budget line by line from the dais. Those are very painful processes, but what we do as policymakers is we set that upper limit, we then set the strategic goals, and we allow the CEO of the company to work within those. Mayor, as it relates to the full-time employee count, when I first saw the information that was provided to us from Dawn and from the entire team, I too had, I think, maybe a little bit of sticker shock. But I think it's important to note, some of those transfers are not transfers out like they current, like they used to be as part of our budget process, they're now just accounted differently. So there's probably some additional explanation that can go on as far as those total dollar amount. And I still am interested in a policy from the council, however it is determined, that gives us a snapshot and a goal to work towards now to build out when it comes to our employees. And so I think it provides structure within the organization and allows us to work with our management and have some flexibility in allowing them to determine the best place for our employees. If you look at our total employee count or the makeup of the employees, not much has changed as far as numbers go, and Mayor, you alluded to that earlier when you looked at it. But where we have put the priority, our ability to be fluid in our budget planning process and put people in the right spots with the right skill set to further the goals has been refreshing, so.
Thank you. And Patrick, as you brought up the bullet that talked about the staffing plan, I believe that that will meet that need. And as we talked, one of the- plan, I believe that that will meet that need. And as we talked, one of the most exciting parts, as far as feedback you gave me, is the staffing plan will look to build out. And we don't have the numbers yet, and so, it would be inappropriate for me to say specifically what you said. But if we kept the current trend at Build Out, we would have about 1,800 employees. And part of town leadership's feeling is that strategically, that number can be much less, which I am very excited about. But that need would be met from our discussions, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, coming. Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I have a couple of things just to ask. So, when we looked at this chart a couple of weeks ago in a study session, the line went up a little bit more, and it changed here a little bit. Would you mind just explaining what changed to help it look a little bit more flat than the last time we saw the metric?
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, thank you for bringing that up. When we showed council the trend in the last time, I had used an estimate that I had seen in another documentation. It was brought to my attention afterwards that there were updated, there was updated information available, so I apologize for that. What we found was, based on last calendar year's permit activity, the number of permits that were issued and now finalized, and looking at our current vacancy rates as estimated at the state level and through economic development, and then looking at our persons-per-household rate, we were able to determine that we're actually much closer to 226,600 persons here as a population for the town of Gilbert.
And Councilmember Taylor, I wanted to just comment on that, because that's the same question I ask. And it is not Gilbert that creates that number, it is MAG. And they just, from our last council meeting, came out with the updated numbers, is that correct?
Mayor, actually, if I may, we have the MAG, the most recent MAG number is from the prior fiscal year. We had looked originally at some future MAG projections that occurred prior to that permit activity. And so, it was brought to my attention that perhaps a more accurate number would be to reflect last year's permit activity, our current vacancy rate, and our persons-per-household ratio.
Thank you. I'm sorry, continue.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. Just a couple of points. One, a couple of areas of concern to just maybe look at here. So, when we, it looks like we're basically going back to the employee population of 2008. And at some point, we're going to, you know, we're a growing community that operations need to grow. When I looked at what some of those FTEs were, there's some that I fully approve. Let's keep our parks beautiful, keep our streets safe with public safety. There are a lot of administrative positions in there that I wonder about. And I probably take a little different view of our board. I look at it like many corporate boards that are active, they're not passive. And they look at, you know, what their organization is doing and do provide input. That is a very common corporate practice. So, anyways, that's just a general theme that I saw where we can look to maybe drive efficiencies. I'll just put that thought out there. And that dovetails in with cost containment. I'm glad to hear those words a little bit more. I'm glad to hear some activity in that area. It's still not what good, high-performing businesses do. Just ledger changes, you know, moving money from here or there for tourism, that's kind of accounting changes. Doesn't really meet the spirit of, you know, going after significant goals and identifying projects. And maybe those are there and they're happening, and I'm just not aware of it. I probably, that's probably the case. But I'm happy to have more of that information coming and hear that that's, you know, being embedded in the organization. Because that's only going to stretch the taxpayer a dollar further. So, thank you for having focus on that.
Yeah. If, to that point, Councilmember Taylor, we are doing that on a regular basis, and probably, we have not been communicating that to the council. I asked all of the departments to provide me with a recap of the last year of what they've done. So, I've got that. It needs to be compiled. We'll start providing that to you on a monthly basis, all the things we do on a regular basis, large and small, to contain costs, reduce costs, find efficiencies.
Thank you. Just two other quick points as feedback to Patrick and your staff. One area that did stick out is the contingency amount about, if I'm adding my numbers upright, about $13 million of contingency funds are still put in the revenues. And I can be educated on this, and I know I'm not a master of the budget here, but, you know, things are getting better. We are seeing an uptick in sales. We are having, so I wonder why we need more contingency funds. I would think as we come up, we need to, you know, pay off those, because we have had to use those when the economy was down. And do you have some initial thoughts on that?
Yeah, Councilmember Taylor, Mayor, members of the council. We actually did do that in this fiscal year. And the contingency itself, it began with the last fiscal year and the zero-based budget we went through. We pulled all of the, as opposed to budgeting within each area for, let's say, a worst-case scenario, we budgeted for what is the average expected scenario to occur, and then budgeted those funds within each line item accordingly, swept the rest of those dollars into contingency. And therefore, if we did have something that exceeded normal situations, we would hit contingency with that, with a full explanation of why we're hitting contingency, what caused us to do that, so that we can track that better within that number, as well as the $5 million Strategic Reserve Fund for Economic Development purposes. So, not all of the 13.5 is for contingency in general for the organization on the whole.
Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate that. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper?
Yeah, I appreciate the direction that this budget is headed. You know, in general, I think it's a bit dangerous to focus too closely. I think they're useful, but I think it's a little bit dangerous to peg our budget, if you will, to ratios and studies by other communities about efficiency and that kind of thing. Because it gets you kind of spinning into a conversation about low-price leader, or, you know, cheapest, and that kind of thing. And I'm really most, myself, am more focused on value, providing quality services to our community at the best possible price. And so, when I look at this agenda, that's kind of what I'm looking for, is, has it been well-vetted by management? Ideas have bubbled up from the bottom, if you will, all the way up through management. They've looked at deferred maintenance issues from the past and making sure that we're trying to catch up for some of the things that we haven't been able to do for the last few years, as well as strategic investments for the future. Those are extremely important to me, positioning ourselves for that. We have to acknowledge the economic and population growth that's going to be coming. And we need to skate, if you will, to where the puck's going to be, rather than maybe where it is right now, or where it's been in the past. So, looking back is good, but looking forward is much better. And I really do appreciate the fact that our lean approach has put us in a great position. Some of that lean approach has been intentional. Some of it has been just a victim of our growth, if you will. Growing communities are always behind, if you will, because the revenues lag the growth and the need for the services. And so, it puts us in a tough position sometimes, but it strengthens us, right? It makes us better. And I appreciate that. So, I really see the budget as about positioning us so we serve our residents in the future better than we ever have in the past. And that's why some of these investments are in here. And I appreciate the explanations that staff has given to me in some of the one-on-one meetings.
And are you ready to proceed then with that number?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to try and touch on a few things I've heard so far tonight. Can we go back to the graph? I think it was the total budget over the last, there we go. I just want to point out here, this is the total budget. This isn't our general fund. My concerns are more focused on the general fund. And I'll touch on that more later. But we get a very different picture when we zoom in on that one. And one of the things we'll see in that other is that CIP and the one-times, those are big amounts. And we have deferred a lot of those one-times for quite some time. And so, we'll see our total budget drop a lot. And again, my focus isn't even going to be on one-times, it's on the ongoing in the general fund. And I'll come back to that. But this goes to Councilman Cook's comment about the seat. That's a capital investment. He talks about 25 years. When you invest in a physical item that lasts 25 years, you're talking about a one-time investment. Those are the kinds of things we deferred. I think there are some of those things we need to touch on. And that's really not the focus of my concerns. I want to talk for a second about the zero-based budgeting. And first of all, Dawn, I want to give you public credit here. She showed my graph, and I didn't hear anything to discredit it. I'm not saying that it doesn't deserve some. I'll take the challenge as it comes. But that means a lot that you would even show that, because this, I'm going to come back to this. But this is my concern. But I want to also touch on what you said though, Dawn, about the zero-based budgeting. I agree that that's a very effective process. And, you know, it's not one we repeated in its fullness this year. And I've been concerned about that, and I haven't raised a big stink about it, but we didn't repeat it in the same way this year. And we were a little less strategic and deliberate, in my mind, in some ways, because we didn't go through that full process. And that's, maybe that feels unfair, but I've had that concern. Now, I want to touch on this issue of growth, that growth makes it harder for us to keep up with our costs. Most of the costs are borne by system development fees, and we have the ability to lead the growth with those fees. And they can be used to pay back debt that was necessary to lead the growth, so that we have the services available. So, I'm not sure that we have a problem with that. Actually, the problem with growth is kind of the opposite, in my opinion, of what Councilmember Cooper talked about. With a growing quickly, especially a quickly-growing young community, you have one-time revenues specifically in the form of construction sales tax that you really can't plan on in the long term. So, you've got that while you're growing. On the other hand, when you're young and you have young infrastructure, you don't have to spend as much on repair and replacement. So, your expenditures are lower than what they'll be long term. So, I think it's, this gets to my concern. If we're starting to draw down on reserves during a growth period, during good times, I would, that raises a red flag for me. And I'll come back to that. I want to make a quick comment about the budget max. Dawn, I might be wrong on this, so help me. From what I understand, the budget-max conversation, that's the one required by law. The other one where we finalize, we could have five final budgets if we wanted to, if we want to bring it back and continue to reduce. Am I presenting that correctly?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, it is required by law that you adopt the maximum amount of appropriation. And yes, you have the ability to make changes to that afterwards, as long as you don't exceed that maximum level.
So, I just, I don't want tonight to get into this mindset that the preliminary budget is really less important. To me, this is the most important. Furthermore, I don't want to have, you know, earth-shattering changes we need to make for the final one. We're going to start to gear up to proceed with the preliminary. I want that adoption of the final to be very anticlimactic. So, I think it's important that we dig in a little more on this. You know, I want to make a quick comment about contingency, because this is another, this is part of my concern. You'll notice in the packet, it talks about the amount budgeted for contingency is decreased by $3.3 million. Well, to be meaningful, you have to understand the context. The way we budget for contingency is we take the total amount of unallocated reserves. In other words, the money that's left over that's not spoken for. Okay? That amount is less this year after our budget. So, our contingency is going down. I don't see that as necessarily a positive sign. So, with all of that, we have major changes to our budget this year. We have some deferred one-time expenses that we're looking at, $12 million worth. That's a huge amount. You know, that's like 10% of our budget. And we also have $12 million of ongoing that's a result of our recent compensation adjustments. And so, between the two, we have a very, very large adjustment to our budget in one year. Now, Dawn, if you'll do me a favor and go back to my chart, I'm about ready to wrap up. I'm sorry for the dissertation. What I did, and this is really at the heart of my concerns, and Dawn, I thank you for your respect to this, I actually used your population numbers and your ongoing expenditure numbers. It was a simple division problem. So, I'm pretty sure I got this right. And what we'll see here is if you follow that blue line that kind of hockey sticks there at the end, that's our budget. You know, in 2011 and '12, that represents actuals. In the 13-year, that's still our budget. We're not done with the year yet, so I'm sticking with that. And then, we have our proposed budget there at the end. And what is the significance? Well, the red line is what our budget would be if we pegged 2011 as our year to start from. And then, we adjusted our budget up according to inflation. And what's the math? The math is the total ongoing general fund expenditure per citizen. In other words, this is the amount we're spending per person in our city. And in my mind, if we control for inflation, I'm not sure why they should continue to have to pay more per person for what we do. I don't know why that's necessary. And so, that's, and this is ongoing, okay? This isn't one-times. I know we've deferred those. I've pulled that out. I'm not making a beef with that. And so, I feel like we're heading in a direction that may be difficult to sustain in the long term. You know, we have a lot of changes we've made all in one year. And I think to throw in, we've already done the ongoings, that's kind of water under the bridge, although it is my major concern. But now, we're throwing in a bunch of one-times. And I wonder if we should wait for some dust to settle before we bite off more than we can chew. Now, my proposal, what I'm looking at here is, if you think that we shouldn't, you know, controlling for inflation, we're going to add for inflation. If you think we shouldn't have to continue to pay more dollars per person as we grow, I think with economies of scale, we should find ways to do that more efficiently. And so, instead of less, if you believe that, then we're off track on the ongoings by about $6.7 million. And that's actually just from last year. I'm calling the other two departures water under the bridge. They're pretty minor anyway. But I, that's just from last year. That's just so we can get back to the same distance from the line as last year. Now, what do we do to fix that? I don't know that's a lot of money, $6.7 million in ongoing. I'm not sure. I'm going to throw out some numbers that would make it work, but I don't necessarily have the power to do them. But I'll just explain them. The previous discussion we had, and it's not on the agenda, but again, I'm not giving direction, I'm just talking about potential ways to do this. When we talked about the 45th percentile for our wages, that would have saved us ongoing around, and this number's not going to be perfect, Dawn, you're going to have to help me adjust it, but it's going to be pretty close, somewhere around $4 to $5 million, somewhere in there. If you, if we also look at hiring freeze for the moment, the total there we save is 7.4. That's more than enough to get us back on track. Am I saying that's going to happen? No. But that would also leave some money, I think probably enough, to continue to add staff in the public safety areas, the way that it's planned. So, I just throw that out there. I do think we are probably growing more quickly than we should be. I think citizens have, you know, the right to an expectation of getting as much or more for their dollar year after year as they did before. So, that's what I'm hoping for, and that's, those are my concerns tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. In your proposal, will that lawnmower chair be taken care of?
That's a one-time capital. That would be fine.
Just making sure. Councilmember Cook?
Quick question back to your graph, Councilmember Peterson. Do you anticipate, because it is basically a kind of a step, or as you call the hockey stick, that the line really is going to be parallel to the red line as we move forward into the next fiscal years?
Well, we tracked it for a Well, we tracked it for a couple of years, and I've looked back in our history, even previous. I've gone way, way back. And we have times that even if you control for inflation, our citizens have paid less per person for the services they receive in our town. So this is an -- I didn't cherry pick these years. I think if I -- I honestly didn't have time to graph. I have, I think, 13 years' worth of data. I didn't have time to crunch. That's the honest to goodness. I'll bring it back in later sessions, but I don't think it's unreasonable to think that we can hold the line on this. I know we'd be paving new ground. I know probably no other government entity is even trying for this. But I also know that our government is taking more and more of our people's pie. More and more of the economy is the government that has that, and that's not the direction I want to go, so.
Thank you. So I'm about to close the public hearing on this agenda item, and I'll entertain a motion because we have some other items to talk about. Is there anything, though, that, before I close the public hearing, that we missed?
Just one more comment, Mayor. I know you're excited about the 1,500 employees that build out, and just kind of doing that math, that's about like 4.5 employees per thousand. I mean, that's a substantial goal compared to where we're at 5.5, let's say, today. So I mean, if town manager and a team can, you know, I mean, that's a -- I mean, if we continued on around that 1,800 employee that build out, you're still kind of around that 5.5. So I appreciate that, but that's a wonderful.
You can do hard things. Is that what the T-shirt said?
Maybe a motion will reconsider that, Mayor.
Right. But I think the point that I brought out, too, is that's the purpose of the staffing plan, is to strategically look at how to do that and technology and such, and we may not get that answer, but it's an interesting thought. Councilmember Taylor?
Just a point on that. A lot of people look to the principle of economies of scale, and we see that in business all the time. In Gilbert, for very good reasons, we're trying to apply the principles of business for a lot of good reasons. Yet in Gilbert or in government, and in Gilbert, as a lot of these charts show, we're not seeing the economies of scale. That would show it. That would buck that trend. Government's the only industry that doesn't produce economies of scale as a general rule. There's pockets, but that's why I'm pushing for cost containment, because that aligns with our drive for business excellence and a high-performing government, and it makes that a reality. And it doesn't make it -- it makes it a serious value play, just like businesses that continue to serve customers with high quality.
Thank you. And I -- one reason that I'm also excited about at least the possibility, it was a year ago, that as town leadership did some organizational changes, that, and I don't remember the exact number of positions, but it was about a $1.1 million savings by just reorganizing. And that's the trend I see in town leadership, is to look at strategically how to best organize and provide those services, which goes hand in hand with what was said, too. I now close the public hearing on Agenda Item 25, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt -- is it -- I want to make sure we're doing it right, that we adopt a preliminary budget of $466,461,447 for the period next year, as it's shown here in our packet.
Is there a second?
You need more than that, Don.
And Mayor, if I may, if we could also set the date of the public hearing and the adoption of the final budget for June 6th, please.
And establish June 6th, 2013, as the date of public hearing and adoption for the final budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. That's approved with a 5-1 vote. Thank you. The public hearing is still open for '26. Is there any discussion on '26 that we need to have? I close the public hearing on '26, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Please vote. That's approved with a 6-0 vote. '27 Agenda Item. Any discussion on '27? I close the public hearing on Agenda Item '27. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Item '27.
Second.
Okay, with that motion, second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a 6-0 vote. Agenda Item '28 is still open. We had some discussion on Tuesday at our study session. Should we have some more? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I have, at times, been accused of being a little myopic. I can't imagine where people get that. And I looked back on this issue, and I thought, you know what? It's a little silly to push for Option 2, because we lose a lot of things that protect us. And so what I would like to do, I think would manage my concerns, I'm fine with Option 1, if we can amend it to remove the section about employee organization rights. And so with that, otherwise, I'm totally fine with Option 1.
To our legal representation, that helps, because I know that there was some feedback that we received if we considered Option 2, that there were some liabilities and some concerns were raised. So do you have any additional help with that statement for the rest of the council as far as, are there still some concerns we should be aware of if we were to adopt that?
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, Section C in the Option 1 ordinance before you has the rights of employees and employee organizations. There are at least Number 3 that we're going to recommend legally. You probably want to keep it. There is a benefit to the town, because it recognizes there's only one specific official employee organization for each group, and there is a benefit to having that. Number 1 and 2 are kind of legally -- there's some legal protections for employees and employee groups, anyway. So 1 and 2 are already stated in the law to a great extent. Obviously, Item 4, which is the bulletin boards, that's a policy decision. And 5 is just a penalty provision. So we're, from a legal perspective, we're fine deleting it. We would recommend that just Paragraph 3 remain in, because it does provide protection to the town.
And Council Peterson's comments, quick interpretation would be appreciated. What would his statement mean?
As far as...
As far as the options that you just said?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry.
Mayor Lewis, maybe the direction -- excuse me for interrupting. Maybe the question needs to be directed at Councilmember Peterson. What is your end goal by having this section removed? I think that might help clarify.
I just want to be clear that any rights of employee organizations are removed with this in the ordinance. That's really it, and then maybe it's pretty minor, but that was my main goal. I think most of the other issues have been handled. So I'm fine moving to approve Option 1 with the change of striking C4. We want to get even more technical.
Yeah, that helps. Let me just look at C4.
So for the public, removing just C4 would just remove the right of an employee organization to use bulletin boards?
Yeah, I know. It's pretty small.
No, I just wanted to make sure that the public, because the public may or may not have this ordinance in front of them. I just wanted to make sure.
Right. I think legal staff clarified that, but thank you.
Councilmember Cook, please.
If a employee wants to put something on a bulletin board, is that allowed today? I mean, just talking about regular employee.
A regular employee, I would defer to management. I believe they are allowed to put things on bulletin boards. This provision was added after the meet-and-confer ordinance was adopted. It was added as a way for -- to allow employee organizations to communicate with their members, and it's my recollection, I'm looking to management to correct me if I'm wrong, there are specific bulletin boards reserved in different parts of the town that are for use for -- by the employee organizations.
I'm not sure I answered my question. Can regular employees put something on a bulletin board to present meetings or?
Yes, they can.
I mean...
Sell their boat, yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, I think in Kelly and Carrie, you're going to have to help me here. There's other parts of the ordinance that prohibit the use of town resources or facilities to conduct union business. This section was specifically required to kind of accept that if an employee organization wants to put a, "Hey, we're meeting here tonight to talk about union organization stuff." I think this was more clarifying so that we wouldn't be, Carrie and Kelly, I would -- that's why. This wasn't really changing anything as much as recognizing the ordinance prohibits an activity but allows it in this limited situation. Does that make sense?
Well, like if there was a group here for toastmasters, and they wanted to meet, could they post something on the bulletin board that says a toastmaster meeting could meet in?
But if you go to the prohibited practices section of the ordinance, it prohibits the use of town facilities or resources to conduct town -- a union business. The way that has been interpreted is if they put a union flyer up on a town bulletin board, that would be in conflict with that provision. This section allows that exception to happen.
It's like a waiver.
Yes. Carrie or Kelly, I would ask you to...
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, that is correct. We've identified designated places where they can post information. It could be any of the employee organizations or other associations. It also helps prevent, you know, gives us that designated location versus having it across the cubicle, you know, rows, as you walk down the hallways and whatnot. So it's, again, identify that designated area.
And can we be reminded, a year from now, June 30th, 2014, what happens with C4?
It all goes away.
Okay. So this is more transition, and so one aspect would be, we've done this for the past few years. We do it another year. It helps with the transition versus it's a step that is helping the transition move faster.
That could be one way to view it, and as of June 30th, 2014, all of this goes away. There will not be a bulletin board for employee organizations. There will be for employees.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
Mayor, you did bring up a point on transition, and I think it's important as we go through this next year that we have as much communication as possible. And I know that this might not be the kind of communication that everyone would want, but I think taking away that opportunity, I'm not sure that serves too much, and it's, you know, I'm just looking to make sure that transition is as smooth as possible and that communication can happen as it needs to happen over this year of transition.
Thank you. So I think as a council, we probably now understand Councilmember Peterson's request, and any other dialogue before I close the public hearing on '28, and we'll look for a motion. Councilmember Taylor?
I was just going to say, I'm okay with the recommendation, because given the digital world we live in, I mean, there's so many other options that are faster, clearer. To me, to me, that there's minimal impact, if any.
Okay, thank you. I close the public hearing on Agenda Item '28. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Option 1, striking Section 2-62C4.
A second.
Mayor, I'd like to amend that, that we don't strike that section.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second with an amendment. Please vote. That's approved with a 4-2 vote.
Now, Mayor, you go back to the main motion, which is to approve Option 1, but you're taking out the deletion of Section C4.
Leaving it in, basically.
As presented. Leaving that in, yes. Sorry.
All right, thank you. Please vote.
We are -- you want to state it again. Basically, the motion is now that it's at -- that we're voting on it as it was originally presented by staff.
Correct.
Wait, wait, wait. Now, thank you for the clarification. We're not going back to Councilmember Peterson's motion.
No, you've changed it. So the motion before you, right now, is move to approve the ordinance as presented for Option 1.
Okay.
There was a second, right? Just a moment. I just want to explain, we have some people here who came from the public interest in this item, just so they have the full context. On my vote, I will vote for this, even though we have that in there, because this is still a step in the direction of transitioning out. The sunset date is moving up six months, plus the opportunity for new MOUs is being removed. So this is certainly progress in my mind, and so I just want to explain that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. So Mark, if you can clear. And a motion and a second. Please vote. That's approved with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. We move to administrative items. Vice Mayor Cooper, just to clarify again, we had no additional requests to speak.
I don't have any other comment cards.
Okay. '28 A is also an extension of what we were just talking about with the memorandums of understanding. There was, in the study session, some discussion about this, and Kelly, why don't you remind us what would be very important for legal to hear?
If I may, Mr. Mayor Lewis, members of the council, one of the biggest issues in the MOUs is that has been discussed is the idea of compensation for employees who serve as representatives of other employees who are involved in discipline proceedings. The MOUs before you tonight, and historically, contain a provision that that time will be compensable. So if an employee is subject to discipline, and they want a peer, one of their fellow employees, to go with them to the meetings and go through that process, you know, both employees' time would be compensated. There has been litigation recently in the area where that practice has been called into question. We believe it is a decision you can make, but if you are going to approve the MOUs as written, which has that compensation provision, we recommend that findings be made of a public purpose. There are benefits to the public that you may find in having those representatives be readily available and willing to do it. It does help protect the due process. It does increase efficiency. And so if that is the desire of the council, we recommend those findings be made. I think those -- that was the biggest issue with the MOUs. And then just as a reminder, under our personnel rules for non-represented employees, they have the right to an employee representative, and the historic practice has been to compensate those representatives as well. So depending on the action of the council tonight, we may want some direction for other employees under just the regular personnel rules.
Councilmember Cook, you had some thoughts. Please proceed.
Did I have thoughts?
You had some thoughts.
Sometimes I wonder.
Do you have another show and tell?
Well, I -- I'm in favor of keeping -- I think we called it Option 1. Is that what I understand? Option 1 with the language that we saw, that you communicated with us. So, you know, as, you know, the part that, again, as I've spoken many times, has been, we are really developing a one-team culture, and part of that one-team culture is to take, you know, multiple teams to really a culture that I think is going to be extremely positive. The executive team and management team, you know, this council is really, you know, looking forward to that one-team culture. And I think through this transition period, what we discussed in executive session, I'm in all in favor for the continuation of that.
There would be some specific reasons why we would do that that you're looking for?
Yes.
Do you want to state those, Councilmember Cook?
I talked to Kelly a little about this. Can you help the navigation of that?
Yes. The benefit of having representatives available and willing and to help assist fellow employees, it does increase efficiency in those proceedings. It does help protect... It does help protect the due process rights, which consequently reduces potential liability to the town. There's also less chance for appeals of, of discipline matters, and it provides for consistency in discipline matters.
So in a motion, if any one of those five were mentioned, and maybe all five, from a legal standpoint, that is what you're recommending?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Daniels?
Kelly, thank you for providing that clarification. I am less concerned with having an employee participate with another employee in the disciplinary process. I do have a concern with one line of the MOUs. It's located within both MOUs. And Mayor Lewis, as a point of order, are we voting on these separately or together?
That may be determined by the motion language.
Okay. That's conveniently, the line is actually the same, and the section is actually the same in both MOUs. It's section 1-3 under Employee Organization Rights, and there are both A and B listed there. And Kelly, my question to you, it's on page two of both MOU, well, it's on page two of GPLAs, and I think it's like five of UFAs. It says, "Employees will be released from duty with full pay when directed by Gilbert to participate in a meeting with Gilbert and/or Gilbert representatives." And I read this to understand that employees will be paid for their time when they're doing, when they're acting in negotiations during the MOU process. Is that, this, these are those lines that specifically apply to that and not to the companionship employee representation during a disciplinary hearing? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you for helping me get there.
And again, if I can just maybe clarify a little bit, too, based on your action on the prior item, there will not be any more negotiations.
And I understand that, and actually, and I, again, appreciate that clarification. But you did say something in study session that caused me to pause, and I have a question for you. You said in study session that we are legally required under federal law to compensate for employee negotiations.
If I can clarify that, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, the town is obligated to compensate employees when management calls them to a meeting to talk about town business. So, and that's for any employee. That's not just your employee organization representatives. But if management were to call, and just give you an example, the fire captains to a meeting, 'cause they wanna talk about how to handle efficient shift changes, that would be a compensable meeting. If the fire captains came to management and said, "We wanna have a meeting because we wanna talk about allowing another way to have employee representation," that would not be legally required to be compensated.
Okay. I realize that we have no more MOU discussions moving forward, and so this may appear to be a moot point, but I, I feel like this is an important clarification in the MOU process, specifically because I was surprised when I read this language and heard it was applied in the way that it has been. I am not comfortable with us paying employee organizations to negotiate with the town. And the reason why I make this distinction is because the minute that you have a nonprofit or for-profit or an entity, an established entity negotiating on your behalf, that is not the employee going and representing themselves or having a discussion with HR or something to that effect. We don't pay organizations to, we don't pay other organizations when, when we wanna negotiate with them or they wanna negotiate with us. And so the minute you take that duty and obligation away from the employee and give it to a established entity, I think that changes the dynamic and the structure. Now, all of that being said, we're not having any more MOU processes in the town. And so I realize that I'm probably falling on a sword. However, if ever there were to be something that came back in front of a future council recognizing that we may or may not be here, I want the last MOU to be a direct reflection on what this council had intended it to be. And I feel like those lines are not specifically for me what I intended. And so I will, Mayor, it's conveniently located in both MOUs. I'd be happy to make that motion, striking. Kelly, if you can help me, I think A and B under 1-3 would need to be stricken. I wanna make sure I'm not touching the employee representation piece of it, but, thank you.
Let me just clear, take a moment, if I may. Actually, section B is the employee representation. Section 1-3A is the, the negotiation's part.
Thank you. So it's for the council and the public's clarification, it'd be 1-3A that I would like to have stricken from both MOUs.
And then B would stay with an understanding that one or all five of the items would need to be mentioned in a motion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, I have a question for Councilmember Taylor. I don't, I don't know, I'm not the HR expert. Is it standard practice to have the opportunity for one of your peers to represent you in proceedings like this and for them to be compensated during that time? Do you know?
Well, from, from what I've seen, it, it depends on the nature of the organization. There's many that are non-union, there are many that are union, there's many that are blended. And in certainly, non-union, it's, it's atypical for garden variety issues. More severe issues that are more complicated and going into, you know, a litigious environment, you, you might see that more often. Where there is union activity in either part or all of a particular business, you see it more commonly. And it depends on the level of complexity and, you know, what the rules are in the organization. So there's not a real clean answer on it.
I appreciate that. I, I just know in my business, this is all very unusual. We would never think to, to pay another employee to be a part of a proceeding for something disciplinary or whatnot. So I, I don't know, that, that seems odd to me. But I will point out, even if we strike this one from the MOU, it's still in the personnel rules. So it wouldn't have any effect on those employees, 'cause that would default to the, the personnel rules on those issues, and they would still have those same opportunities. Am I incorrect?
If I may, your, the personnel rules allow any employee to have a representative during those proceedings. The issue is compensation, and the personnel rules do not state explicitly that that is compensable time. That has been the practice. So, of course, depending on the action of the council tonight, we would want direction, because you are going to be seeing the personnel rules. We'd want direction on how you want us to deal with that with non-represented employees.
Mayor, the issue here, though, is if we're gonna start talking about changing personnel rules, I don't know that we can really make that decision in this meeting, 'cause it's not on the agenda.
Absolutely cannot. We would just, you know, if, if the council votes on these MOUs and says, "We do not want employees who are serving in a representative capacity for other employees in discipline proceedings to be compensated," and we'd like that to apply throughout the organization, that gives us clear direction of what we need to do.
Mayor, I would prefer to have that conversation on a separate agenda and we can adjust. I think it's cleaner just to strike the whole section, and then we can decide how to, I mean, union employees are employees, they'll be covered by that other discussion. So that's my preference.
Sure. I'll give my input. This is not a huge item to me, and yet from my 30 years in, in the private industry, it's common. And so when this came up, I guess I had a, only because the businesses I work with, they've had it. And it just doesn't seem like a major dollar figure that if I ask you to come, and I realize I'd probably talk to you before the meeting, but if I ask you to come for an hour meeting, that's what we're really talking about, is whether or not you would get paid. And so I don't see a big dollar figure. I think we have the right as a council, if all of a sudden we heard in the future that this was becoming a very big issue and, and a lot of money was involved, then I would have a different viewpoint. I'd be willing to change my feeling on that. But for right now, this is such a small amount of money, and it's more for that employee that would be very fearful of being involved in something like this. They're just reaching out to a friend to say, "Will you come with me?" That's, that's why I'm feeling comfortable in keeping it, because I think it's, the intent is very positive. But I also, if the council doesn't wanna go that direction, it's not a huge issue, issue for me. But I, I guess I'm willing to go with Councilmember Daniels' motion and, and take out the A, keep the B. But if your motion were to go forward and we get the vote, I'm okay with that, too. So, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I appreciate your thoughts, 'cause, 'cause I, I feel the same way in that to have somebody go with an employee, that, that's, that's, that's good. I think, and, and also the dollar is, is low in terms of how much we would pay in employee representation. In terms of the dollar, the question that I see as the bigger-ish risk to the town, and Kelly, maybe you can chime in on this, would be a potential litigation. If someone sues the town, as Phoenix went through, could you talk us through what the level of risk is and the financial impact that we would see, or what type of litigation? Because that's where, to me, Mayor, where the big money would be, is the liability on that side. Would you mind commenting on that?
And if I may ask for clarification, the liability of allowing the compensation for those representatives to remain in place and that practice being challenged, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Looking at the guidance that we've seen in the, the Superior Court recently, which of course is not precedent for the town, it was a specific case where the judge in that case did find that allowing compensation for the representatives of other employees in discipline proceedings found that that compensation was a violation of the gift clause. The concern the judge raised is that there was no findings of a public benefit for that. As an attorney who's done a lot of the personnel appeals for the town and handled those matters, there are, there can be public purpose findings made. We have seen that when there's a representative, it helps streamline things, it makes it more efficient. Because if someone's there and has some support and can turn to that person during those proceedings, they can deal with their questions right then and there, rather than stopping proceedings, going and getting advice and coming back. It does reduce your liability. You're, you're providing a greater due process protection to the employee who's subject to discipline. We've seen very few of the appeals go further. They end at the final appeal stage. They, they rarely go to litigation, and in fact, a lot of them do not even go to the final appeal stage because they have someone there that's explaining the process and making it more comfortable and more clear for the employee. So there are public benefits. Those benefits were not articulated in the Phoenix case. So we think if you make the findings, there is, the courts have to give deference to legislative findings, which they do. While I can't tell you it's risk-free, nothing ever is risk-free. We think the liability is fairly low on that.
Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we consider approval of the MOU contract 2014-1002-0005 with Gilbert Police Leadership Association effective July 1, 2013, for a term of 12 months, striking section 1-3, letter A. And also approving the memorandum of understanding, a contract number 2014-1002-0006 with International Association of Firefighters, effective July 1, 2013, for a term of 12 months, striking section 1-3, letter A.
And those findings?
And, thank you. She just told us that. Finding that having an employee representative, a company, another employee through disciplinary proceedings does increase efficiency, it reduces liability, and creates consistency within the organization.
Is there a second?
Second. A motion and a second.
Mayor, I'd, I'd like to amend it to add to strike B in both MOUs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Please vote. Okay, that's not approved with a 2-4 vote. And so we return to the original motion, and that has a second, so please vote. That's approved with a 4-2 vote, thank you. We've talked budget tonight, and Don, her, we, we love talking budget. For the council, would we like to move forward with the motion at this point, or would we like to have some discussion?
I'm willing to move to accept the budget report as it was presented in the packet to us.
Second.
There's a motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a 6-0 vote, thank you. We've done 30, so on 31, updates from boards, commission, and committees. Councilmember Cook?
At the ECAB meeting that I attended yesterday, we were given a presentation from ASU as it relates to the efficiency of energy usage in a couple of our buildings here in the town of Gilbert. They looked at Muni Building 1, 2, and the Public Safety Building, and two fire stations. And in fact, the way they presented the data was that if you're a Clint Eastwood fan, there was a movie called The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly. I hate to say this, but Muni Building 1 was considered the ugly. So Patrick, I'm sorry, your office is in the ugly building. The interesting thing about it was, well, what do we do to fix it? And the recommendation was that a more extensive study would need to be done, but there didn't seem like there was a clear answer to that. But it was fascinating. The, the best building was right across the street, the Public Safety Building. They had a very, very high rating, and the two fire stations were as well, very well. So Patrick, if you wanna move over to Muni 2, it's a little better building, but, you know, you're gonna have to hold down the fort.
Thank you. Other updates from boards and commissions. Agenda item 32, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I, I would just, regarding the Parks and Rec Board, we're coming to the end of the window for public input on the Parks Master Plan, and the, the team has done a lot of work. There, there's a lot of data to, to assimilate, so credit to Melanie Dykstra and, and her team for pulling it together. The calendar item for the public is Wednesday, June 26. Did I get that right, Melanie? Okay, thank you. June 26 is when we're gonna have kind of the last call for feedback from the public, and we encourage everyone to bring their thoughts, use the beautiful parks, and go get some feedback, and, and then come, plan on coming Wednesday night, June 26, to give that last call for feedback. Because once we get that, then we're gonna wrap that up, and it'll come through the summer to the council, and we'll, we'll be making some exciting and very important decisions on Mark Park's master plan. So I wanted to just highlight that before we get into the holiday here. Thanks.
Thank you. Future meetings, there's information that came since our study session, and so I'm going to give some feedback sooner than next week. The study session planned for June the 3rd will not happen. Kathy, are you okay with that? We will meet on June the 6th with doing interviews at 5:15 PM, and I guess if for some reason there is some need to have a study session discussion, that some municipalities do it the same night of their council meeting, but for right now, assume that we're not planning on doing that. So no study session on June 3rd. We do have a joint chamber meeting with, a joint meeting with the We do have a joint chamber meeting with, a joint meeting with the chamber on Tuesday morning at 7:30 AM in Room 300. Report from Town Manager. Agenda item 33.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Dan and the rest of our Economic Development Team for their recent accreditation. That was a long and grueling process, and we're very proud of them. Congrats to the whole team.
Dan, you're next, so, and keep going. They'll take any more accolades that
That's all I have.
That was, and I, in a council meeting where you have many agenda items, sometimes it's really hard to just describe what a major recognition that is, but this for our town of Gilbert will be in the history books, one of the more significant recognitions. And so I take part of your time for Dan to come to the microphone because small business is something that the council very much cares about, and as part of some of the dialogue that occurred, there's another piece of information that we skipped, and we'll now ask you to do that as part of the Town Manager's report.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. One of the initiatives that we have in the five-year strategic plan for economic development is the development of an entrepreneurship ecosystem, the focus on small business, growing, enhancing, gardening and nurturing those, those small businesses, with a particular emphasis on high-growth, high-trajitory, gazelle, if you will, type entrepreneurs. Over the last couple of months, we've been working with a group out of the East Valley Partnership known as the Arizona Venture Partnership. We've been working with that group as well as some interns from the Thunderbird International School of Management, as well as ASU's Bears Honors College, and a couple of other programs within Arizona State University. And in pursuit of this entrepreneurial ecosystem, we've been refining through lists, through data, through analysis, those small businesses and those entrepreneurs that are on a high-growth path, be it products, be it services, that are looking to commercialize. And we have identified 30 companies in the community that we are working with to refine their needs, albeit through angel investments, possible venture capital, et cetera. So just wanted to give Mayor and council an update on our efforts in economic development to work with entrepreneurs, the small business community, to grow those high-growth companies through the identification of these businesses in Gilbert, working with our partners. So as we say, we're developing an ecosystem for entrepreneurs through our partners.
Thank you. Patrick, thank you for that report. See what happens when you're on an airplane. Agenda item 34, report from the Town Council on current events. Councilmember Cook?
Mayor, you and I chatted about this at lunch, but another show and tell on my lapel. I wear a ribbon that is an awareness of Foster Care Month today. This month is Foster Care Month, and I like to ask our Gilbert residents to pray and consider and discern that we do have children that are looking for homes. And so with that, I just like to make that awareness of current event for this month.
Thank you. You know, I had that on my front page to mention. Thanks for bringing it up. And 14,000 children in foster care, so thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the Transportation Master Plan, the town of Gilbert does have a website, gilbertonthemove.com, and there's an online survey there that we would love for the residents to participate in. It would help us understand what you see as being the needs for transportation, both now and in the future. And if I can reiterate one more time, next Wednesday night, Operation Welcome Home, we are honoring Sergeant First Class Corey Rumsberg, and this is a pretty spectacular story. And you're going to want to sense Corey's spirit firsthand. Corey was an Army Ranger who was injured during his 10th deployment, and he has spent a substantial amount of time in rehabilitation and has just returned home to Gilbert to live with his family. And so Mayor Lewis, he deserves all of our energy and attention next Wednesday night at 6:00 PM, and anyone that can come down to Town Hall and just get a personal sense of Corey's dedication to our country, it will enrich our lives, I think, to be, to be part of that. So next Wednesday night, 6:00 PM here at Town Hall.
Thank you. Agenda item 35, three items. Did appreciate the chance to be with Councilmember Peterson today at the Central Arizona Shelter Services, which is in, close to downtown Phoenix, and that's one of the groups that we support. Thank Jessica for joining us and Kurt Sharp, and thank you for taking the time, Councilmember Peterson. The Cactus League Hot Dog Challenge, I need to mention, last Saturday at Big League Dreams, Gilbert was on the way to another huge victory over the city of Mesa. It was 13 to 4. We decided to play one more inning, and the line umpire called Forrest out, Mesa's PIO, and he went to the first base and stayed anyway. And so I thought in the spirit of regional cooperation, we let him stay. It did lead to a six-run rally by Mesa, but the final score is what I wanted to announce, or the final outcome is that Gilbert did win again, 13 to 10. And congratulations to team members who were involved with that. The Chicago Dog, Dan, this is another, the Chicago Dog was declared the winner of the hot dog eating contest this year. Last year was the Giant Dog. So, you know, those two dogs are the ones that we care about this year. And I do go back often, we'll forget this and not be aware of it, but Councilmember Peterson, the interpretation of what was said earlier in the meeting in the minutes, that omertou, or otanjobi omertou, we do wish you happy birthday and thank you for your service with the council. On that note, meeting adjourned.
It was Eddie Cook's birthday at the beginning, on Sunday?
And to Councilmember Cook, then I give you an omertou, otanjobi omertou. Meeting adjourned.